Good evening, everyone. I'm Mr. Sam Burelli, Chairman of the Winchester Board Selectmen. With me tonight are my colleagues, Jimmy Thompson, Steve Powers, Jim LaHila, Mike Lanningport, and also our two state representatives, Representative Michael Pennae, Senator James Lewis, our town manager, Richard Howard, and somewhere in the audience, our DPU Director, Jay Hill, and our town engineer, Chris Alba. So, we're all here to listen to you tonight. So, the objectives tonight's meeting, and these are similar remarks I made at the earlier meeting, our objectives tonight are very straightforward, which is to provide you current information about the proposed, in this case, the Mystic to Woburn transmission lines from Winchester to New England. So, the last time that the board was going over Wakefield, we're going to focus on the one that goes over to Mystic, to answer your questions, you know, about that, and to listen to your concerns. As again, we have a very similar meeting on the 27th of January, in that case, we're focused on the line that's going from Woburn over to Wakefield. We'll have some resources tonight, and I'd like to first sort of focus on this one to be on the, on this line, 115 volt line. So, that line runs from Woburn Substation at Martin Pond, as you can read where it is, runs along Pond Street, Woodside Road, Wildwood Road Street, Fletcher Street, Macon Street, Main Street. And from there, the line runs through Bedford, Somerville, and Charleston, and then on to the Mystic Substation in Everett. So, it's, we're the first of several towns that works this way through. So, after this introduction, I've got a few more points to make. And I will ask Senator Lewis, Representative Day for their comments. I will then introduce Mr. Sam Burelli and his colleagues from Eversource to give an overview of the project, and have them hand out the two ways, and then you'll pick up on the way in with the presentation. And at the end of their presentation, I'll then open the floor for public comment or questions. I think their presentation will take about 20 minutes, and we'll run through some of the ballots in the evening to answer your questions. So, the next slide. There are lots of questions that have come in to us, have selected out this sort of subset to sort of set the table for us as we start on this one. We've got plenty of information on each of these issues and others during the course of the hearing, but I wanted to single these out. So, the first question that we've been asked most frequently as the town decided is, is this a town project? And the short answer is no. The town did not propose this project, the town did not design this project, and they have not made any commitment to the line yet. So, it's something we're considering, has been one decision made whatsoever on it. This is an Eversource project, and I'll explain it to you in detail. It's part of a regional wide program of net capacity and improve the reliability of the network that provides electricity to Winchester and the surrounding towns. So, it's not a town project, Eversource project, and it's still open. Does the town have the final say in the project? And again, the answer is no. The state, through the Energy Facilities Siting Board, which you will hear referred to tonight as the EFSP, has the final say on location and design of the transmission lines. So, in the end, neither Eversource nor the town have the final say, the state, Siting Board is a subset of the Department of Public Utilities. The third question we get asked frequently is, are we considering alternative routes, alternative lines? If those are Winchester, the answer is absolutely yes. Eversource has a preferred route, but they and we are looking at alternatives, and we will continue to do so based on what we hear from people. So, the question of, what's the fixed route? If there are alternatives, if possible, we're looking at those today. Other question we're asked very frequently is, are we evaluating the impacts of the project? Yes. We are very concerned about construction and traffic impacts, about possible EMF health impacts, and particularly how a power lines might affect the town's ability in the long term to maintain our groundwater and sewer lines, which are critical for our public health. So, we have hired a consultant to advise us on construction issues, to advise us on alternative technologies for the construction, to have a best route done, and we're in the process of hiring a consultant who will advise us on EMF and the health impact issues. So, we will affect, have people, we can do peer reviews of what the Eversource proposals are, and as we discuss those, and we'll make sure that people are informed about those issues. And then, the last couple of questions are, will the concerns of the town and the resident be heard, particularly at the state level? And yes, we've taken steps to ensure that happens. We have asked our town council to file with the state board a request that we'd be permitted to testify as intervenors. It's a legal term, basically it gives us, it sort of guarantees us the right to file our opinions and to testify when asked questions during the process. I understand, Mr. Howard, I'm trying to, I understand that the Siting Board did accept our position, our application as an intervenor on the 345 line, so that's set. We've also asked the town council to file for us as an intervenor on the 115 line that we're talking about tonight. So, in both cases, we expect to be registered as an intervenor at the hearings and be able to provide all comments and all of things. But it doesn't ensure that they agree with us, but it does ensure that all our concerns, all our recommendations will be heard and be part of the public record. So, the last question we've been asked is, can you, can I get more information about the project? And certainly the answer is yes. We've been posting the information and links on the town page, town webpage at www.winchester.us, and on the town webpage you'll find a fairly large section there that says Eversource projects, and a link to all the information we have there. That information includes descriptions of the projects, maps of the proposed of alternative routes, all the presentations that Eversource has given to us, and includes copies of their frequently asked questions. Back earlier in the winter, we asked Eversource to answer a lot of some specific questions. They did so, they posted up there, and we'll continue to add to those as they come in. There were some copies, I believe, of those questions at the door in the ceiling, so if we go see them online, we may check the paper copy there. Also online are all copies of the public notices, meeting minutes, and hearing records, as we pull those through. There's a copy of a Winchester residents mailing list. A lot of people said, well, you know, I didn't get the notice, and such like that. So, look on the webpage, look at the addresses, the address list. If your name is not on that list, it may be because you were dropped, maybe because you went to Winchester, California, or something like that. We can correct those. We put together an entire list, posted it. That made notice should have gone to you if you were within 300 feet of their proposed line. So, that means if you're a butter to the street, or a butter to the bar, so you shouldn't receive the notice from the town, or possibly also one from Eversource. The other point, if you're interested in a project, but you're not right on one of the routes, and you want to get notifications, in the middle of the webpage, there's a button that says notify me. Push the button, and you can get a little bit of a checkbox in there, you can put your email address and say, I want to be notified about all the different things. You can get every notice that we ever send out, or you can just get select ones, notices, the project notices. We can inundate you with as much town junk mail as you like, but that's, that's the way. If you're not living right on that line and you want that information, go to the website and plug yourself in. Okay, and then we'll have links to the other, sort of, to the Eversource's webpage, to the state Energy Facilities Siting Board webpage, and so on. So, good. We'll get into this, I will finish my comments, and I'm going to ask Senator Lewis and Senator Day to provide you with their perspective. We've asked them, we're, I'm going back and saying, we're pursuing three alternatives at this point. One is to ask the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, ISO New England, which basically sets the network services area, asking them to reconsider their general strategy and criteria. I think we've written a letter to that effect. We're looking at alternative routes through Winchester and Woburn towns, and then we're also looking at what we can do to mitigate and improve the course of routes through Winchester. So, we are pursuing all three routes at this time. There have been no decisions made at this time on our part about preferred routes, and so we're looking at all three of those. And I'm going to ask Senator Lewis and Representative Day to give you their perspective on what they're doing and what they're looking forward to.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to get a quick show of hands, if possible, as to who was here, or who's not, who wasn't here for the January 27th meeting?
Mine.
Okay. We'll take most of the meeting. I'm going to, for those that were here, please bear with me, I'm going to run through essentially what we presented the last meeting, because what I'd like to do is put this in context, how this project got here, what the process is going forward, and what role we are playing and we can play going forward. So, apologies for those who've heard this before, but I'll go through it fairly quickly. Thank you again to the Board Selectmen for this hearing tonight, or for this meeting, I should say. The, this proposal is put forward because Greater Boston is going to need for more electrical reliability, electricity reliability. And there were two competing proposals that went up to what they call ISO New England. ISO New England is that board, a regional board, that manages our power grid from Maine down through Connecticut. And ISO New England had spent years looking at the Greater Boston area to determine how the electric reliability and capabilities of our grid can be improved, so that we don't have rolling blackouts, brownouts, we don't lose power to these neighborhoods. ISO New England had two projects at the end of the day that they were considering. One was this project, Eversource, which comes down and unites the Wakefield Substation with the Woburn Substation. The other project was one that Senator Lewis and I, along with Representative Dwyer, Broder, Senator Donley, asked ISO New England to approve, and that was the Sealand project. Sealand would have come runoff Salisbury, runner on Cape Town, underneath the ocean, which is why it's called Sealand, come ashore and then, and then make use of a series of unused railroad, abandoned railroad tracks, and existing bike paths down to Everett. We asked that that project be approved in lieu of this one, for the very reason we're here tonight. This project from Eversource is disruptive to our neighborhoods, it raises a lot of concerns about safety, it raises a lot of problems as to our everyday life and what our life will look like going forward. Unfortunately, ISO New England decided to go with Eversource, which brings us here tonight. That was back in December of 2014, that we first asked ISO New England to go with the Sealand proposal. In April of 2015, after, after ISO New England made a decision, by the way, they told us that they selected the Eversource project for two reasons. One, money, and two, reliability. And I'll let Eversource discuss that, but to me, the bottom line that ISO New England made the determination on was money, that it would save them and save the consumers money by opting for this project instead of the Sealand project, ignoring what we felt were very valid concerns about the problems and the other cost drivers of going through our downtowns, which we'll hear about tonight. In any event, ISO New England chose the Eversource project. In April of 2015, Senator Lewis and I met with representatives from Eversource to be briefed on their proposal, and during that meeting, which is in the State House, we stressed to them the importance of clear communications and full accessibility to our town, to our neighborhood, to our municipal leaders, and everyone who's going to be impacted by this project. From April through July, either Senator Lewis or I, or both of us, including our staff, participated in more than a dozen meetings, public meetings, town meetings, official, meetings with town officials, residents with Eversource itself. These took place at the State House, the Mass Department of Transportation, Stone Town Hall, Winchester Town Hall, in the neighborhoods as well, and obviously here. In 2015, Senator Lewis and I asked the Department of Transportation, Secretary Pollock, to assist us in trying to reroute this proposed route to minimize the disruptions on our communities. At every turn, we've sought to minimize these disruptions. First, obviously, by opposing the project, and now that ISO awarded the project, trying to reroute what is, what is coming down the pipe towards us. We asked for health and safety assurances, we demanded better communications to our towns and residents. And as I said, on January 27th, our requests have been met, some with cooperation and some with resistance, and some without great failure. We heard that notice was not properly provided to some folks. We heard that some of the notice that was provided was inadequate, given that it wasn't provided in the language for the resident to be able to understand, nor was there a notification that it was an important notice and it should be translated into a native tongue. Eversource, to their credit, did tell us that they investigated alternative routes, and they've offered full-time community liaisons to address questions about the project going forward. That's how we got here. I wanted to just very quickly run through where we go and where the project is now. The project is now before what the chairman of the SSB said is the EFSP, the Energy Facilities Siting Board. It's an independent review board that sits under the DPU, under the Department of Public Utilities, but isn't subject to the DPU regulations. So, they're a nine-member board that sits kind of independent in the state. They're charged with ensuring that the project will, quote, "provide a reliable energy supply for the Commonwealth with a minimum impact on the environment at the lowest possible cost." That's their charge, it's a nine-person board. After receiving the application proposal, the EFSP then publishes a public notice and convenes a public comment hearing. That hearing was held on November 18th in Stone Town Hall. Some residents in Winchester, Stone, and Wakefield spoke up at that meeting to voice their concerns into an official transcript, which is now part of the record of this case. The EFSP then set a deadline of December 2nd for intervenors. Interveners are those individuals or entities or groups that wish to become formal parties in the proceeding. They have to demonstrate that they're substantially and specifically impacted by the project itself. Again, a number of parties have petitioned and have been allowed in as intervenors. The town of Winchester, the most recent one, is an intervenor. The town of Stone is an intervenor. ISO New England has filed as an intervenor, and individuals from Winchester and Wakefield themselves have filed and have accepted as intervenors. Short of filing as a formal intervenor, as most of us find ourselves in the position being, the EFSP also accepts and reviews public comments from individuals. We know, we've read a host of public comments that have been posted from individual residents, from Wakefield, from Stone, from Woburn, from Winchester, about the concerns, the impacts, the burdens that this proposal is going to have, and frankly, highlights a lot of the questions that we'll have here tonight. Senator Lewis and I encourage you to continue to make your voices heard. They are read, their comments are read and considered by the EFSP, and there's a, EFSP, our request has extended the public comment period, and you'll see up in the back, I believe there'll be some postcards up there, pre-printed about ways to get in touch with the EFSP directly. Flashing forward a little bit, we expect evidence here at the hearings to take place in March, after which time, the intervenors, those official parties, will then be allowed to brief their cases as to why the project should or should not go forward, as to what routes should or should not be considered or approved. The EFSP will then go to work on rendering what they call a tentative decision, which will then be public. After that is issued, the EFSP will publish a final decision that will have formal findings of fact, rulings, justifications, et cetera. After that, the interveners or any party in the case can then appeal the case further to the courts. That's kind of the rough outlay of what we're looking at now, process-wise. Again, this is, this is, as you all know, a disruptive project, one that none of us asked for, one of us that we frankly opposed. We hope Eversource can answer the questions that our residents will have here tonight. I do want to speak very briefly after the January 27th hearing of meeting that we had to just outline briefly what Senator Lewis and I have been doing, as we frankly have been learning about the EFSP process as well, as it unfolds. We sent a letter to our federal delegation, Senator Warren, Senator Markey, Congressman Clark, asking them to formally intervene at the federal level with ISO New England, to ask them to reconsider the awarding of this project to Eversource, and ask them to file legislation as well to block this type of proposal and this type of burden impacting specific towns without concerns other than frankly, bottom line, financial concerns. We've also filed legislation in the State House itself, on the state level, that would require the EFSP to not just consider the bottom line, which is what it appears that they look at now. They'll look at the final cost of the project, and that in many cases seem to trump what's going on here. The legislation we've asked to be implemented will require the EFSP, before they look at the bottom line, to consider the environment, the public health, and a minimum impact on the overall well-being of residents and the butters to the proposed route. That's in the process of winning its way through the legislature. Now, we've picked up, I believe, 12 co-sponsors already, we're in the process of trying to gain momentum on that end. That's, we're all, I'll let Senator Lewis pick up if I did miss anything, but I want to assure you that we are remaining vigilant on the state level of this end, standing with you here in Winchester with the residents of Stone and Wakefield, in trying to mitigate what's going on here, hopefully, really, end any disruption that we're going to be facing. But I'll turn to Senator Lewis.
Good evening, folks. I'm Jason Lewis, Winchester's state senator. Representative Day did an outstanding job there, kind of giving everyone an overview of where we've traveled over the last several years, and where we are today, and where we're going over the next 12 to 18 months, so no need to repeat that. I would just echo what he said, that, you know, it's our job as the legislative delegation, you know, representing all of you, and the job of the Board of Selectmen representing all of you, to listen hard to the concerns that you're voicing, and to do everything that we can to make sure those concerns are heard by Eversource, by the Energy Facility Siting Board, and by any other stakeholders in the process. That's what we have been doing, you know, up till now, and that is, you can rest assured that we will continue to do that as forcefully as we can to make sure that those concerns are heard and are fully taken into consideration before any plans are completely finalized and they move forward. One example of how your input is, has been helpful is, as Representative Day mentioned, we took a close look at the original enabling statute that created the Energy Facility Siting Board and gave it its mandate for how it should consider projects, and this dates back about 15 years. And as a result of that, we just recently wrote proposed legislation to make changes to the mandate of the Energy Facility Siting Board that would really require them to consider more carefully the environmental impacts of projects like this, the public health impacts, and frankly, the well-being of the residents and businesses that would be along the routes of projects like this, whether they're electrical transmission projects, or gas pipelines, or other similar projects. So, we will continue to push that. Unfortunately, the legislative process does not move fast, so it's probably not a solution that will save us, you know, tomorrow, but we will certainly be raising our voices, continuing to make sure that, you know, more and more people understand what these projects are, you know, consequences of these projects, and the disruption they cause, and potential risks to the environment and public health. So, thank you for being here. Don't be shy, I'm sure you won't be. You know, ask questions of Eversource, or the Board of Selectmen, or us, and share your feedback, and that, we urge you, encourage you, to continue to do that tonight, and also feel free to send additional follow-up requests for information or questions to either myself or to Representative Day, and we'll make sure that those get to, you know, wherever they need to go, whether it's Eversource or to the Energy Facility Siting Board. So, thank you, thank you all for joining us tonight.
Let's turn to the second piece. We asked Eversource if their presentation focused primarily on the Mystic to Woburn line, and that was over there. Some of the material will certainly repeat what you, those of you who were here on the 27th, where we asked them to focus particularly today on the Mystic line. So, I'm going to introduce, those, I'm really asking him to introduce his team, give their presentation. I expected it to take about 20 minutes or so. When they finish, we will then come back and answer all of their questions.
I'd like to introduce our team tonight. With me tonight is our project manager, David Velez, also Siting Board Coordinator, Kate McInerney, and Dr. Peter Valberg, a subject matter expert on EMF. My name is Bill Sam Burelli, I'm the Community Relations Representative for the town of Winchester for Eversource. I guess one of the things I'd like to just clarify, we, there were some kind of mixed messages on the two different projects. We do have two projects here tonight. This Energy Facility Siting Board hearing was actually held, for the Mystic to Woburn project, was held on July 15th, so it's a few months ahead of the Woburn, the Woburn to Wakefield project. One of the, one of the probably significant points that I should make is the reason why this project was probably selected over the Sealand project was because it addresses the capacity and the ability to transfer power between stations. Right now, there, there is constraints within the stations, between the stations, that limit ISO New England to have to call up more expensive generators than they typically would have to if these, these projects were in place. There's about 41 different projects around the New England power grid, and that, this would be a savings of about $800 million annually for generation costs. I think what I'd like to do now is maybe begin to walk through.
So, my name is David Velez. I am a project manager with Eversource, responsible for the Mystic to Woburn 15 project. It is a separate suite project from the one you heard about a couple of weeks ago, the Woburn to Wakefield project, but they are part of a suite of projects, almost 40 projects, so I don't know if they're out of region, we'll talk about that in a minute. I'm going to go on to the next slide, I'll just go right with you. Again, for the folks who saw this two weeks ago, they'll recognize a lot of the slides, so bear with me, but for those who have a brief overview of the electric system and what is what power is generated at generating facilities at a certain voltage, then gets stepped up to a higher voltage for transmission. That's just more effective to move power around at great distances. So, those go over transmission lines, like 115 and 345 KV transmission lines, they can either be overhead or below ground. The project we're talking about tonight is a below ground transmission line project. From the generation stations, they are transmitted to distribution substations where the power generally gets stepped down again, so that it can go into the distribution system. That's the power lines you see throughout the streets in front of your house, and from there, the lines get tapped off to individual house services. Next slide. We touched on the project lead in ISO New England. I know we've spent a lot of time talking about this, so the way that I like to think to them, an analogy, is that they're sort of the air traffic controller of the power system. They're an independent agency, and they essentially oversee the distribution companies, the transmission and distribution companies, everyone involved in the power system, or as it were, and yes, they are responsible for the reliable delivery of power, the cost, the fairness in the setting of costs, making sure everything is reasonable, both from the generators and from the distribution side, and for making sure their projects are reasonable in terms of impact. ISO New England, and they, they look at criteria that is set by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC. They have certain standards of, you know, what it takes to reliably deliver power. You know, for instance, can you have one transmission line connecting a generation station and a whole city? Well, it's probably not a good idea, you want several backup lines. It's FERC who meets those requirements, and it's ISO that ensures they are met. ISO, several years ago, looked at the greater New England or greater Boston area specifically, and looked at the regional system, not just at one or two projects or one or two stations, but the entire region, and saw inadequacies with the transmission in Wakefield. Saw that there was potential for overloads, and that the system needed improvements, not just in one or two places, but in a large scale. And that led to them putting out a saving of, you know, need, of what needs to be addressed, and then various companies submitted their proposals of how they could offer a solution to meet that need. Sealand is one company that put in a proposal to meet the need. Eversource also put in a proposal to meet the need, as well as National Grid and others. And the Eversource-National Grid combination of proposals is what was chosen by ISO to effectively meet the need. And again, that suite of projects is what we collectively call the Greater Boston Solution. So, this project, the other project is running out of Wakefield, as well as... So this project, the other project you heard about, Wakefield, as well as the recent network of projects throughout the region, make up the Greater Boston Solution. Benefits of the project, next slide. So as we mentioned, I heard reliability of electric service, obviously, we want to keep the lights on, that's the number one goal here. Number two, reducing the cost of energy. Then, as Bill mentioned, by having a robust transmission network, it not only provides backup in case a line fails, but it allows for multiple power generating stations to connect, as it were, with multiple distribution stations to allow an ideal combination of generation sources, and hopefully reduce costs for everyday consumers. The project is a large construction project, so there obviously is going to be construction spending in the region from all the contractors. And finally, there is a tax benefit, we are putting personal property in towns, these are assets, and we do pay property tax on those assets. Okay, so the project specifically, this is just the Mystic to Woburn project. It is a 115 kilovolt underground transmission line. It uses a technology called pipe-type cable that is different than the other one that you've heard about two weeks ago. This project has three conductors or wires that are inside one single pipe. That pipe is filled with a dilute fluid for insulation, and that single pipe goes through a duct that will be placed underground. There's also a couple of small PVC ducts for fiber optics to allow for communication. Essentially, what you're seeing is in one, interesting. I'll talk more about construction on the road. It does connect the Eversource Mystic Station in Everett to the Woburn Station on Con Street, you're probably familiar with. The project goes through several towns, overall 7.2 miles, a little bit in Boston, 1.4 in Somerville, Medford for 3.2 miles, Winchester for 2.3, and then short distances inside the substations. As we do this project, there's also going to be some improvements inside the substation, basically the connection points where the line goes into the substation equipment. The project as a whole, we have an estimate currently of about $75 million. That is for the line construction materials, as well as the improvements inside the substation. And as we go through this process and hear more about this, we have been and continue to closely coordinate with the towns in the planning, construction, and restoration. We have engineers speaking with Department of Health Works, looking at record data, doing surveys in the town, finding out sensitive receptors, buildings, et cetera. So we've been doing a lot of research previously for the last two years, and we continue to do that. Next slide, this is an overview of the entire project. On the left here, you see Woburn, and if you look very closely, you'll see something marked as substation. And the red line shows the preferred route as it goes through Winchester, Medford, Somerville, and Boston. The yellow line you see here is what we call the Notice Alternative. Basically, when we go to the Energy Facility Center, they have a requirement, they have a requirement that we present to them, two potential routes, the one that we propose as our preferred, and then another one that's geographically diverse that we say could be built, but it's not our preferred. And I can get into that later, but that's what you see here, these two routes. I know it's hard to see. The next slide is a zoom-in, just in Winchester, just showing the preferred route. And you can see that from the station on Con Street, we basically cross over and then to Woodside Drive, go down Woodside Drive to where they change over to Wildwood, and then continues on to Bacon Street, and continues down Main Street at 38 and to Medford. Next slide. So in terms of how do we come to this route, and why do we choose this particular route, the rise of this one preferred, we did look at multiple options. I think, you know, at the end, we came to have six different possible routes that we looked at and considered, and what we did with that is we scored them based on various criteria that we show here. These criterias can be anything from how many residential residences, but the roots, sensitive receptors, hospitals, schools, et cetera, public transportation facilities, historic resources, shade trees. All of these things get factored into the decision, into a matrix, and they get weighted and scored, and that's how we weed out and select which route we think would be the best possible option. Next slide. Next slide shows a little bit about construction. The top picture there, you see a manhole vault going into the ground. They typically come preformed, you drop them in like that. The bottom picture shows the pipe actually being laid into a trench which started to dig. Essentially, I'll walk you through in general how the construction process works. Once we get out there in the streets, there will be manholes placed, they'll be excavated and placed in the ground, probably precast like this, and then soon after those are put in, the pipe portion comes, which will be a trenching process, a contractor will come in, excavate. The trench is only 24 inches wide by five feet deep, and so one contractor comes in, opens the street, excavates, the material goes in the dump trucks and goes away, shore up the trench, and then put the pipe in the ground, it gets welded together, eventually gets backfilled. A temporary tango patch comes in while we do, and that's just right after the works and we close the street. Permanent restoration happens afterwards. But several work goes in the ground, the pipe, and then after that process goes through, the conductor itself, the electrical portion, gets pulled in, manhole to manhole, the wire gets strung through, squashed together, potentially terminating the station. The manholes you can see here in this project are a little bit smaller than the other project you've heard about. These are approximately 10 by 10 by 24 feet long, and these are the manholes where the cable itself gets spliced, larger than your typical distribution manhole, just because of all the work that has to happen inside that manhole for the splicing. As I mentioned, final pavement restoration happens after the project is complete, and we meet standards both from the state and from the towns. We will have discussions, negotiations with the town, what they want to see in terms of restoration, and we do that. And then there will be construction at the substation that will happen concurrently with the project. Next slide shows a couple of cross-sections here, again, the trench, showing a five-foot deep trench, 24 inches wide, six inches on the bottom, it's filled with gravel typically, and the pipes that's on top of that. You see the two small PVC forage pipes for communications. Here you see a cross-section of the manhole, again, 10 by 10 by 24, approximately over 2,000 feet of rock and earth down there. Next slide, talks about the schedule. I think there might have been a little bit of mixing of the two projects. I spoke earlier about the schedule for this one. We did have a series of open houses last year in Winchester, we did on April 29th. Those were open houses that Eversource held to share information about the project. We then filed a petition with the EFSB in May, May 20th, and the EFSB had their own public hearing on July 15th in Medford. That was hosted by them and moderated by them for the public to hear the project, not for comments. We have already done our evidentiary hearing process, we've had several days of testimony, and we expect, you know, one plus two more before it wraps up and a decision is then given to the board to decide. That process takes several months. We think that we might see a decision from them in the first quarter of next year. And pending that approval from them, we would like to start construction in the spring of next year, 2017, and with that start date, we think we would be fully complete with construction by the end of 2018. That's not to say that we will be working the entire length of the route for an entire 18 months, project linear, but overall, from the first job underground to delivering power, roughly 18 months. Next slide shows managing impacts during construction, particularly traffic management. What we do is in addition to hiring a contractor or several contractors to do the work, we hire a traffic management engineering company. What they will do is look at the work we have to do, the site staging and setup, and they will develop traffic management plans that will direct us on how we can do our work safely while also safely moving traffic. We don't anticipate that we have to close any roads for this project, with the possible exception of manhole deliveries, and that would just be for a couple hours, and that's simply because the manholes come from a large truck and they have to be lifted by a large crane, and that typically takes up more than one lane of traffic. We can do those typically off-hours, and that's only for the manholes and, you know, a limited number of those. For the rest of the project, for the linear construction, typically what we are able to do is shift the traffic around us. Typically, we're only just one lane or maybe in the center of the road, so traffic can go on one side or both sides. If necessary, we can detour traffic. You know, we have done several of these projects and find that for the most part, traffic can easily flow around us. There will be police details, of course, when we're doing construction, both for our safety and the public's. Those are paid for by Eversource. We do maintain access, I know it's a popular question, if we dig up a trench in someone's house across their driveway, how do you get in and out with those emergency? Our contractors are charged with always maintaining the availability for access, at least they have to have a steel plate. There are the trench open in front of their driveway, you can always have the contractor put a plate down so that you can get in or out with emergency vehicles, you can get in or out. There's also a bit of interaction and communication, working with folks, you know, we are going to be in front of a particular house or a business, and we know we're going to be blocking. We can typically work with that butter and say, hey, what's your schedule? Here's my schedule, and maybe we can figure out a way to at least disrupt it. As far as how the communication works, that's our outreach effort. We do that multiple ways, obviously having meetings like this, having websites, we'll talk about that. There's also door-to-door outreach. Basically, right before the project, two weeks or so, I think before, we will have a team going to specific locations and handing, donating those with information, schedules, updates of what's happening, and then we do that effort again immediately before construction, just so that if you are, you know, right there in the affected room, you know exactly what's happening. And then, of course, there's emails and phone calls and websites, so that, you know, the hotline is actually established right now, anyone can call in. I think that will get more use when we're in construction, when people want to say, hey, we have this going on, you know, we learn what you're doing when you're coming. That's what the hotline's for, people will be staffing that. I know EMF, to watch their magnetic fields is a topic of discussion, and rather than hearing it from me, from the company, I'd like to have Dr. Peter Valberg, he is an independent scientist with the entire Eversource, to talk about this, explain this, and hopefully provide some information.
Good evening, thank you for coming here. Thank you, David. I'll say a few words about electric and magnetic fields.
Just a question, can you give us your medical and scientific background, please? Because I know you're not familiar with it.
Yes, I could do that. I worked at Harvard University in physics, I have a doctoral degree in physics, which includes electricity and magnetism. I taught physics for a while, and subsequent to that, I joined the faculty of the Harvard School of Public Health, where I received additional training in both medicine and physiology, human physiology, so that my Harvard School of Public Health research involved the combination of using the physics background plus the physiology and toxicology that's important for public health.
Okay, so just to clarify, you are not a medical doctor?
No.
Because when they introduce you, the doctor that can be misleading to the crowd. And can you also tell us any conflicts of interest?
Can you, we hold questions for you, for your survey.
I just think it's important for people to know if they're the medical doctor or if they're not.
Certainly, questions, gentlemen, that's all, all to the end, I do.
Okay, well, I think that's a fairly succinct summary of my background, but you are correct. I'm not a medical doctor. However, the whole point of public health, as opposed to medicine, is to prevent disease, and so the training in public health in some sense is actually more important. For medical doctors, they're usually trained to diagnose and treat disease, and so that's what MD training involves, whereas in public health, you want to look at the causes of disease and ask yourself whether, you know, there can be some sort of correction that can be made in the environment to prevent it. And so I think that preventive aspect is really an important aspect of the toxicology risk assessment expertise that I've been involved in. Just to continue with the electric and magnetic fields, I just wanted to get everybody on the same page, and that is that we as a society use electricity in our homes, our schools, and our workplaces, and electric fields derive from the fact that the wires in our house have voltage on them. Any wire that has a voltage on it, whether it's 110, 220, or higher voltage, just such as we're dealing with here, has an electric field around it. If you turn off the voltage, the electric field goes away. Any wire that carries a current, currents measured in amperes, has a magnetic field around it, and that magnetic field goes away if you turn off the current. And so the electric and magnetic fields naturally accompany the use of electricity for lighting, powering, or whatever. You might ask yourself, what is an electric field? An electric field is really just defined as a force that will be exerted on a charged particle. And so if I'm a charged particle and I'm in the presence of an electric field, I will feel an either attractive or repulsive force. Likewise, a current creates a magnetic field, and the definition of a magnetic field is a force per unit current. And so if in fact there's a current running and there's a magnetic field in that area, that electric current will feel a force, and consequently, magnetic fields are essentially the basis by which motors operate. So we're in a motor, you're changing electricity into force, into rotating force or whatever. And so that's really where electric and magnetic fields are, they're really part of the use of electricity. Now, I think what it says on this slide is for these particular lines, because they are underground, the electric field part of the EMF picture is interrupted, I mean, the electric field cannot penetrate from underground, and so there is no electric field from these lines versus what there would be an electric field from overhead lines or even the distribution lines in your neighborhood and so forth. Now, the magnetic field does depend upon the current, and the current does run under the streets and so forth, so that you can, using the principles of physics, calculate just how much the magnetic field is. Now, magnetic field has been studied for a long time, its effects on biology have been studied for a long time, and various agencies around the world have looked at what the potential effects are. There's in fact one agency called the International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection. You may see them by their acronym sometime, ICNR, and they have looked at the research, and periodically review the research that comes out on electric and magnetic fields, and their guideline for magnetic fields is 2,000 milligauss, and that that's a continuous field below which you would not expect that there would be adverse effects. Just to give you a base of comparison, the Earth's magnetic field, which is steady, it doesn't have this 60-cycle variation that power line fields have, that steady field in New England is about 570 milligauss. So when you hold a compass and you see it turning, that turning, that compass is responding to the Earth's magnetic field with a size of about 500 milligauss. And what's happening in power lines is that the current is varying up and down at 60 times a second, because AC power is the kind of power that we use, and consequently, the magnetic field is varying up and down at 60 times a second. So I think one of the things that's important is to keep the size of magnetic fields in mind, and then what I'll show you very briefly on the next few slides is some idea of what typical fields are in our environment, just by virtue of the fact that we all use electricity in our homes, our appliances, and so forth. The electric and magnetic field, I heard last quarter, okay, the last quarter of previous slide, I just wanted to emphasize that the potential effect of electric and magnetic fields on electronic equipment has also been studied, and in fact, one of the most sensitive pieces of electronic equipment are implanted cardiac pacemakers. And so the standard guideline there is that if the fields are below 1,000 milligauss, that you would not expect any kind of malfunction in cardiac pacemakers and so on. Now, just, okay, now we can go on to the next. Now, just, okay, now we can go on to the next slide. This is probably hard to see because the numbers there are very small, but really, the bottom line of what the right-hand panel is trying to show is that typical appliances, particularly those appliances that have motors in them, produce fairly large levels of magnetic field, because as I mentioned a moment ago, the principle of operation of a motor involves magnetic fields pushing on each other to create the motor in motion. And so you can see there, if you can't see, I can read some of these off, that things like computers and screens don't really produce a whole lot of magnetic field. Now, some of you may be old enough to remember that there used to be a kind of television screen called a cathode ray tube, and one of these big bulky things that had electrons running from the back of it to the front screen, and that those electrons were essentially steered by magnetic fields. And that just gets back to what I was saying earlier, the definition of a magnetic field is it will exert force on a moving charge. And so the sweeping of that beam across the cathode ray tube was caused by magnetic fields. And so those televisions produced quite high magnetic fields in front of them because of the steering mechanism. Now, today, we mostly have just liquid crystal screens, and those do not have these electrons moving back and forth, and they have very low magnetic fields. On the other hand, as you might see on that screen, it seems that had motors, like vacuum cleaners can go up to fairly high fields, like, you know, 10, 20 milligauss, coffee blinders up to 40 milligauss, copy machines in the office, or maybe you have one at home, typically could go up to 90 milligauss. Gas stations, only because they have pumps in them, could go up to 50 milligauss. Microwave ovens, not because of the microwaves, but just because of the motor that's in there turning the food around, could be up to 200 milligauss and so on. I won't go through all of them, because the point is just to really see that you can come across these fields by virtue of just using electricity in your home as well. Now, if we could go on to the next slide, which I think this was just an example of how you can encounter magnetic fields just walking around. This was taken by walking around my sidewalk in the town, and if you notice, the bottom, distance along the bottom is just supposed to be time, just walking along. And then you notice on the vertical length there, there's the magnetic field and it's listed in milligauss. This is what we were talking about just a minute ago. And it goes up to the top, top line, there is 100 milligauss. And so as you're walking from location to location, depending upon whether you're close to motors, maybe you're close to drop lines that are coming down from the overhead distribution lines, maybe you're close to transformers where there is a step-down transformer that's delivering power to your house or to your business, you can come across magnetic fields that range typically from about 5 milligauss to, you know, all the way to 80, 90 milligauss and so on. So it's also not only characteristic of home environments, they're also characteristic of wherever you go, whether you go to a shopping mall, or you go to a restaurant, or you go to a store. All of these facilities are using electricity, and so you would come across those fields. Now, the next slide is, actually, the report shows the magnetic field from the lines that we're talking about here. The green line, if you look at the line that has green dots on it, you notice it has one peak, and that's essentially, as you can see, there's a magnetic field from the existing lines that operates today. And that existing line, if you look at the magnetic field, it falls off with distance. The little triangle figures you see on there is sort of representative of the location of where the lines might be, and you notice that's right above 20 for the existing lines, meaning that the distance coordinate at 20 feet. And you notice the peak field goes up to about 3 to 4 milligauss, let's say 4 milligauss and so on. So you notice two things. The peak field is 4 milligauss, and you also notice that as you go away from that peak, the magnetic fields drop off, the size gets less and less, and that's characteristic of all sources, in your home, motors, whatever, the field decreases with distance. Now, the purple line is the proposed situation, and for most of the preferred route, has the new line next to the old one. And so that's why you see two peaks. And so the purple line essentially means there's current on the old line as well, but then there's slightly more current on the new line because of the heavier green line. And so the purple, the purple curve is the magnetic field from both the existing and proposed lines as they're running in the future, when they're both there. You notice that the fields are actually a little lower, and that's because the net result of this project is that the current is now being split on two lines instead of one. And so that means that the current on each line is slightly less, or the old line is less than what it was before, and the size of the magnetic field is proportional to the amount of current. And so that causes the field to decrease a little bit. But, I mean, the bottom line here is just to sort of see that, you know, the fields are definitely there, they're produced by the current, but they are small and they diminish fairly rapidly with distance from being directly over the line versus being 10, 20, 30 feet to one side of the line. Okay, so that's a very quick summary of the project, and I think maybe now I will turn it back to David to talk about the project.
I'll go through the next part quickly, just till I know there are questions and I want to get to that. But this slide just outlines some of the outreach efforts, who we're talking to as far as stakeholders, municipal officials, state regulators, our regional partners, businesses, et cetera. You know, from the public, the way we do this outreach, we have door-to-door outreach, mailings, the door hangers, website, formers, et cetera. Next slide. But I think probably the best resource for you to get information on the project would be the project website, which is listed here at www.m-a-d-n-h-solution.com. Once you're there, you can see three different projects, and you can find the Ruberton Mystic project. Click on that, and that will give you information about this project specifically. It actually has links to the EFSP DP website, where you can actually see the petition and all the facts and figures and testimony, everything that we've given. It's quite extensive, you'll do a lot of reading. But this is where, basically, the home base for all information on the project. If you prefer to paper form, all those petitions and exhibits and plans are also here in the town library, as well as all the post-community town libraries, and copies have been given to town officials at the clerk's office. This next slide, I think, shows, I guess, there's a link. If you click here to get more information from the EFSP. That's all we have on this presentation. I think I will turn it back over to the board for questions.
We'll be able to ask. Okay, I'll see if it does. So openly, four and out of questions with the following. I learned my lesson last time. I am not going to promise to stay here all night to ask all possible questions. By about 10:30 or 11:00, I'm going to exercise the chairman's prerogative and ask that he shut the doors and do that. If you have questions that are unanswered tonight, however, please do contact us, contact the town manager's office or send a message to the selectmen, we'll make sure that your questions get answered. I am going, because this is focused tonight on the Mystic to Rober line, I'm going to ask if there are people who want to ask questions specifically about that line to start first. I'll go through those questions and walk on the floor, any more in town questions. I'm also going to ask, at least to start out, that people restrict themselves to one question, a statement, a question, a quick follow-up, that's fine. As we, you're welcome to come back and ask as many questions as you like when we begin to get the basic questions answered, certainly on the floor, if anybody wants to speak. So I'll open this floor now, questions, and direct to Eversource, if you'd like. Yes, sir. And I'd like to actually ask you to use the microphone, please. WinCam will be, is recording the session. We do not have the capability of this particular laboratory to broadcast it live, however, they are recording it and broadcasting it in a few days, so using the microphone will be useful to people who want to watch it and listen to it later. Sir?
My name is Joe D. Marinas. I'm a retired electric engineer, lived in Winchester for almost 20 years. And, you know, my primary interest is Winchester. I've lived there. Okay, I read the Winchester Star, the last issue of the, about the last meeting. I was just appalled at what I'd call hysteria, baseless hysteria about this project. Okay? I don't see any risks, health, safety, or otherwise. And I think we need a little science, like some escalator, one would come up there. If you can see, just some basic electrical principles. You have the wire, fingers of wire. If there's current going through the wire, you have a magnetic field going around the wire this way. You reverse the current, and the field goes the other way. To transmit electricity, it takes at least two wires. The power goes, current goes out on one wire, does its work, and it comes back on the other wire. The current is going one way on one wire, the other way on the other wire. The electric fields or the magnetic fields are in opposite directions, and if the wires are close to each other, the two fields cancel. There's very, so you take an ordinary lamp cord with two wires together, there's very, very little field, magnetic field comes out of that because they're close together. Now, I'm sure everybody knows the power station, the switchyard up by the lake right here on Pond Street. Okay. There, we've got 315 KV lines, and the wires are separated quite a bit, I would guess under 20 feet of water, Mark, he goes and tells you that. And actually, in my work, I worked in consumer products, television for a long time, personal computers, pretty high-level engineering management job, and we were very concerned about safety in fields and with television. We had this X-ray business going on, and I was deeply involved in all of that, and very concerned. Really, 20 years ago, this business of magnetic fields causing health problems became an issue. It was put to bed pretty quickly. But I actually did have a handheld unit that measured electric, magnetic fields, rather, and I was concerned about it, because my daughter was pregnant and there was a power line running behind her house, so I actually brought this device out to California to see what I could measure in her house. And it was almost nothing. I've walked under the--
Is it going to go to 10:30 or?
I don't--
There's more of this lecture, you go to 10:30, we're going to get kicked out.
I can't hear you.
Well, let's finish, you finish your statement.
Okay. Anyway, I've walked under, by the switchyard here, walking under the 315 KV overhead lines, and I don't remember the numbers, that was 20 years ago, but I could definitely measure the field. When I took the unit home, I measured high fields in front of my electric stove. Okay. And the switchyard is the worst case you can imagine, because the wires are spread way apart, so each one will have its own field, and canceling the field is, you know, pretty far away. So I think there's a self-canceling thing here. We're talking about an underground line and a steel tube. The, there'll be three-phase lines, which is a little complicated, but the principle doesn't change. These three lines will be very close together, and their magnetic fields will cancel each other. Another thing you got to remember, when you're moving power, you're dealing with voltage and current. The more voltage you have, the less current you need, that's why voltage gets so high. So the higher the voltage on the line, proportionally to the given amount of power, the less current you're going to have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I just don't see any problem. I draw to my left to the steel, and I don't see a problem. I love Winchester, just as much as you guys do.
Okay. Thank you for your statement. Next question comes, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I mean, going on, it's similar to the question I asked last time. I know you said that you're hiring or in the process of hiring the health consultant, and I think that's what we really need. We need an independent person hired who can evaluate all of this and tell us whether it's hysteria, whether the people who live very close to these lines really need to be worried, who can review the literature, the studies about childhood with leukemia, whether it really is linked, how close the bedroom is to these lines. So I'm wondering, you know, when is that person going to be hired, and how are they going to communicate with us and all that? Or how are you going to communicate with us?
We're looking at several for two consultants, one on the construction aspects and one on the health aspects. Both will be under contract, I presume, I believe, actually, I'm looking, and we'll be able to ask the staff to answer questions. So, yes, we will have staff. We will have people on our consulting panel who can answer questions for us.
Okay. And in terms of the questions that you're giving to them, I mean, have you, has the board writing up the list of questions and concern? Have they been given a mission?
Yes, we're building up a very sizable stack of emails and letters that are coming in from people who are employing us. Obviously, all the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hear what people are asking the questions about, and we'll try to digest. We've had Eversource's answers, we'll digest Eversource's as well, and put them out for you. And we haven't decided certainly, but we may require another information session to move that information out to people. So, yes, we are in the process of letters.
Okay, thank you.
This crowd can't be that quiet. Certainly, sir?
Hi, I'm Charlie Christ. I live at Seven, on Bacon Street, and obviously, the trench is going to go in front of my house. My primary concern, is this going to be all daytime construction or is it going to be night construction? That's my key question. And I'm curious, it goes buildings in segments, so how long would a particular section of the road be opened up and disrupted as you move the way down through the building of this line?
I can answer that. I'll try to speak out, sir, we're going to hear me.
You're going to have to yell at the microphone or yell at us.
Can everyone hear me reasonably well? Okay. In terms of day-night construction, we can do both. We typically do both, and that is something that we discuss with the towns specifically as terms of what they want. As we move forward, even after an approval from the DTU, there still is basically grant of location permits that need to happen in front of town, and with those permits, they will direct us and say, we only want you working during these hours, we want you working in daytimes, nighttimes, weekends, et cetera, and we will follow those directives. Some towns would prefer we work at night only because of the nature of the traffic. This town would prefer us to work days only? We can do that. In terms of the trench itself and the size of that trench, the typical trench section is between 100 and 200 feet. The pipe itself comes in 40-foot sections, so you would see, you know, 120, 180, et cetera, segments. 100 to 200 is roughly the size of the trench. And to, maybe go ahead, you know, typical question, well, how long will you be working on that trench? It's very difficult to say with any accuracy, you know, how long will you be in front of my house kind of question, because there's all sorts of field conditions that could occur. But as a very rough, you know, stressed rough guideline, you know, that trench moves along in a linear fashion like a train moving down the street, and I would say that the progress of that train is between 15 to 100 feet a day, typical condition.
Thank you. I just encourage the town, we do daylight construction, since our house is 30 feet in front of Bacon Street, and I really wouldn't want construction out there during the night. Thank you.
My name is Joe Lizaro. I live on Dunham Street. When I was a child, there was a lot of discussion as to whether or not cigarettes caused cancer. And the industry fought against the notion that it did. As I got older, it was a question of whether lead and gasoline caused any ill effects to health. And the oil industry assured us that it didn't. Lately, was, do cosmetics cause skin cancer? Lately, it was, do cosmetics cause skin cancer? Sunscreens and such? And the cosmetic industry said, no, it doesn't. I am concerned about electromagnetic radiation. From what I've read, it does seem to have ill effects on health. One of the concerns I have is if it's undergrounded, how does it affect the water lines and the transmission of EMF to the houses throughout plumbing systems conducted down the new water mains in Washington Street? And would that distribute the electromagnetic radiation throughout the town and not just the areas where the construction takes place? I don't know whether or not the town government has a master plan for utilities, the interaction of the water pipes, water mains, and the electrical lines that would be underground and whether they're above ground. Whether the town has planned, with any long-term planning, how the utilities would be located and how the gas and the electricity and the water would be distributed throughout Winchester. I don't know if there's any plan for that. And again, I'm concerned about the interaction of the electrical wires with the water mains.
I think I'll ask the EverSource folks to pass the first question. I'll try to ask you a pretty good question on that tour.
Yes, on the question of the interaction with the water, the answer is no, there will not be an interaction because the source of the magnetic fields is the wires. And the wires have a magnetic field which drops off with distance. And as has been pointed out, the currents flow in opposite directions in the three-phase conductors, so they cancel each other to a great extent. And the magnetic field is only something that exists because the current runs. I mean, it can't, if you will, penetrate into the water flowing to your house. I mean, that's just not the physics of magnetic fields.
I'm not a physicist. I wasn't necessarily reading the water. I don't know whether water does amplify electromagnetic radiation. I do know the Navy Department is very concerned about that for their torpedoes and their equipment. So I assume you're correct that there is no EMF in the water. However, I think the pipes are made of steel. And if the water mains have steel plumbing, I wonder if the steel would not conduct water from one pipe to another. And the pipes in your house are made of copper, which is also conductive. And I do believe that the plumbing system can't distribute electromagnetic radiation to both the houses. Am I mistaken about that?
Well, you are correct. Actually, in your house, the electricians and the utilities often use your water pipes as a grounding source. So if you connect the current to a ground pipe, that does allow the current to flow down the pipe into the ground. But that's not due to the magnetic field. That's people literally connecting a current to the ground, and it's there for safety purposes as well. The magnetic fields do not in any way affect the structure of water or the content of the water and so on. This is just a different physical kind of interaction.
Genu, on Washington Street, three thirty-sixth Washington Street. I'm three hundred feet away from your power line, so I'm here not for myself. I'm here to raise a concern for people who live right above the power line. My major concern, because I'm a healthcare provider, so my major concern is for the people who live... Because on your first, the slide of EMF, about EMF slide, you said the magnetic field is not shielded by earth. Okay, so it can travel. We all know, we all can be affected by our mind and body. So basically, if for our magnetic field, we could affect ourselves just by standing here, by talking here, and I could affect my own body. So now mentioning the high voltage power with high current underneath the ground, how much would be impacted on for the people seven twenty-four hours above the power line? What would be in twenty years? We all know there was a movie by Hollywood in nineteen ninety-eight about civil action. It's about, you know, it talked about, about the water pollution in our neighborhood towns, Uber. So I don't want, in twenty years, and saying there is another Hollywood movie come out, so Winchester would be the victim of this.
Thank you for that comment. I would just reply that we, as a society, have been using sixty-cycle electric power probably for nearly a hundred years, and it's been flowing in our streets. And if you look at wires that used to be strong all over our streets overhead, you know that exposure, in fact, probably was even higher than it is today. And as far as we can tell in the public health environment, over this one hundred years of use of electric power, there's really no disease that has resulted from that use because there's really no interaction between those magnetic fields and body tissues. So I think that a lot of things have been mentioned, you know, civil action, cigarette smoke, and lead and gasoline and so forth. And so those have turned out to be hazards. But I think that it's not that magnetic fields are not from study. And it's not that we haven't been exposed to them. We've been exposed to them in this environment for a very long time. And I think we do have a good track record, which I think should give some reassurance that this use of electricity has not been seen to result in increasing disease.
Well, in public health, we all know that cancer rate has been going up. And we don't know what really exactly causing the cancer. Okay? The woman breast cancer, the colon cancer, the men breast cancer, we don't know. We don't even know whether the microwave is affecting us. So those to be answered. But right now, there is something will be put underneath us, which we don't even know what the future impact. So how do you make us feel relieved that we sleep on those? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I would just urge you to look at the cancer statistics, either from the American Cancer Society or from the National Cancer Institute. It's not correct that cancer is going up. There may be a few cancers, and particularly those associated with cigarette smoking, that go up depending upon exposure. But if you look at overall cancer rates, they are going down on a each-specific basis. Trouble is, we're all getting older, and cancer is a disease of aging. And so as population ages, you may actually have a greater number of cancer cases. However, the age-specific cancer rates, I would not agree that those are going up.
Thank you. You welcome to back this, but we're...
Okay, just one more. Sorry.
I'm sorry. You're welcome to back this. Question again, let's go through all of everybody.
I may add one other comment, too, just to follow up on that. One thing that perhaps I haven't done a good job explaining tonight or mentioning, I apologize. Unlike the other project that we're discussing, this project is following an existing one-fifteen line, essentially the entire route. So the route that we're discussing from Woodside and Wildwood, Bacon, all the way through, there is an existing one-fifteen line of nearly identical construction. And it's been there since the mid-nineteen sixties. And, you know, as far as the question, how do we know, and, you know, what proof, and how can we synchronize? People have been sleeping for over fifty years, so I'll just mention that this is not a new phenomenon in the electric industry and on these particular streets. This is just a supplement to an existing line in those streets.
So just to ask you, just since you raised that exact point, what is the total voltage of this line when it's complete? Combined together?
The voltage doesn't change, even though we add a second line. They will both be a hundred and fifteen thousand volts. What changes is by putting the two lines next to each other and essentially tying them together at the ends of the station, you increase the capacity to carry the same one-fifteen volts. What you do, that was mentioned earlier, is you reduce the current on the line, which, forgive us, I'm a much more engineer, the distress loading on the line, which actually creates more of a magnetic field. So by putting this project in, as Dr. Valberg showed, the magnetic field is actually lowered because you're reducing the current on the combined two lines rather than just on the one.
Back to you, Mr. Valberg. I'm really happy that you keep bringing up cigarette smoking because, as you know from the last meeting and all of us have learned, you still defend regularly for Morris and their cigarettes. So I think that's relevant for us to know. My question to you is, you keep emphasizing over and over the dramatic drop-off of the electromagnetic fields with distance. And you keep not really addressing the fact that the definition of distance means that, you know, children, homes, schools, children's own school, as an example of a place that we directly on this line, don't have distance in this case. So how do you, how does that make sense for us to get any comfort from what you're saying? I mean, the studies that we're looking at are talking about dozens of feet away, tens of feet away, hundreds of feet away, football field distance away from high-voltage lines. The people in this community, it's a residential community, we're living right up and over these lines. We're putting our babies to bed on top of where these lines are going to go. It is offensive that you keep paralleling, in my opinion, that you keep paralleling how we use microwaves every day and how we go to supermarkets because we stand in front of a microwave for thirty seconds. And by the way, pregnant women are told not to even do that because we think that it's probably not a good idea. So you're asking us to put ourselves at a constant, chronic, lifelong, decades-long exposure pretty directly above these lines.
When I say, thank you, when I say that the fields drop off with distance, I don't mean to have you miss the fact that the fields, even immediately over the lines, are extremely small. I mean, the peak field, in the case of this particular line, if you notice, perhaps, there was just a few milliGauss. And so, you know, I don't...
But again, sir, with all due respect, your definition of extremely small, we don't want an extreme, in your view, an extremely small exposure. It's not extremely small if it's permanent in your life. If it's a permanent fixture now in your home, that's not small anymore.
I think you also need to compare it to those guidelines that have been developed by public health agencies, like the ICRUP guidelines, which allow for two thousand milliGauss. And they can say, well, there is no anticipated health effect from those kinds of problems. So the most...
But okay, then I'm gonna return to a question that we've asked you before that you haven't answered in the chart that you actually took out at this meeting, that you had at the last meeting because it was so ill-received, where it drew, you referencing the two thousand milliGauss. Why are you having this conversation? And why is EverSource paying to tell us how safe this is if we are so far out of the stratosphere of safety? If you're so sure, and this is so minute and inconsequential? We know how EverSource wants to obviously do the most cost-effective method. So why are you pouring money into telling us how safe it is if that's a fact?
I think that there is the concern about magnetic fields. And that's primarily why we're having this session, is to try to get some of the scientific facts out on the table and say, yes, I mean, there may be things out in the environment that you should really exert your time, money, and energy to reduce exposure to a whole variety of things, of which cigarette smoke certainly is one. But the magnetic fields are things that have been studied for a long time. And I think the conclusion of the public health agencies have been that you can't prove a negative, but the chances that a magnetic field is going to cause an adverse effect at these low levels, you know, is very small. And I think that was the message that we're trying to get across.
I also thought of that answer. I wanted to, why is EverSource doing this? And why are we spending, you know, resources to talk about this? Because of the evidence. Worth of us to be here tonight.
That, I present that answer. I think that's a little smug. I don't appreciate that. You've been asked, because we're all hearing about studies, and there are correlations with childhood leukemia. That's not a joke. I understand you can't prove a negative. I understand that. We all understand that. We're all reasonable. We're not here because we feel like being here. We're here because it's a real concern, and there are real correlations. And we don't want to be finding out in twenty years that this has been what has made our children sick. That woman is correct. I have more friends than I can count who are thirty years old and have breast cancer. Just because we can't pinpoint exactly why, intelligent people in fields are aware that there are very real risks, and we are here trying to assess them for ourselves. I don't want to play into hysteria either, but I don't want to live on top of this line with what we know about the long-term effects. I don't want to be that guinea pig. That's why we're here.
You've answered part of it.
Thank you. You're welcome to come back and ask one more question. We've got a bunch of people here.
I'm just gonna...
I think there's a comment that I would like to just clarify. You mentioned that living on top of a line, distancing, that people are sleeping on top of a line. That is not the case. This line isn't the streets. It's in the roadways. And as you can see by the chart here, the distances we're talking are not football fields. The scale is zero to fifty feet.
Fifty feet, right. That's what I'm saying. Our homes, we measure our own homes. They're less than twenty feet from where these lines are going, including the five feet that we put in underground.
And we can see the drop-off within ten feet from the line on this chart here. I just want it clear, just so that no one has the idea, these lines are not going under anyone's homes or any other structure.
They're going within ten feet of where our children go to sleep. That's close enough for me to be concerned.
The reason we're moved to register because we like this place, okay? We have kids, we have young kids. I worked for WE for twenty years. I know the high power pretty much, okay? I designed a five-hundred kilovolts substation, okay? I have a few questions. Well, I know what you're talking about. You tried to add another line to increase the electricity for the transmission power, right? I understand that. But my question to you will be, if that means fifty years later, you're talking about the current line, right? We already have one-fifteen kilovolts transmission line back to nineteen sixty-whatever years, right? If that means fifty years later, we still need to go back, just in case we use more power, we needed to, I would say, dig out straight again to put another trace over there? Another transmission line over there? Come on. We have a lot of new technology, right? We're talking about the new resource power. Why we need to think about this one? That's my first question. Second question. I deal with the EMR every day. I design the products for saving people's lives. We really concern these kinds of things. When we design the high power, the rule has been changed because that's new century for the people. We work for the people. We want to save a life. I understand the way from, but I would say you can build this one. Even in the, like, developed country, they build this power line, very high-voltage power line. But that's, they build it really far away from the resident area because the major reason is the impact of EMR right now is unknown. Nobody knows this result. Think about it, gentlemen. If you want to put the Winchester people resident like a rabbit, okay? I'm sorry about my words. Like a rabbit, under or near the high-voltage power line, I have no comment for that. I think that's stupid. That's risk our life. The subject, back to your slide seven regarding the benefit to the town. You know, I don't want to separate my tax dollar for these kinds of things, okay? Because that will risk my children's life and the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just add to that, that the EMF has been studied for a long time. I mean, I think maybe we mentioned... I mean, I think maybe we mentioned that back in the nineteen eighties, the United States Congress in fact funded this program specifically, funded a research program administered by the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences that specifically looked at the effects of power line, electric and magnetic fields on all sorts of systems, including whole animals and so on. And the results of that research program was that they could not find that there was a reproducible biological effect, you know, indicating that that was fairly reassuring, that that particular technology was safe. So I don't think that there's anyone who would say that this is a exposure that has not been studied.
Sure.
I am, I'm going to take a different approach here, not to do with medical for a minute here. And I first of all want to apologize to Representative Day because I owe you an email on this topic, and I've been on the phone and collected a lot more data since I spoke last. Currently, when you have overhead power lines on your bordering your property, property values are lower, between eleven and thirty-five percent in the country. That's a known fact across the country when your property borders high-power tension lines. You also have the much less ability to get a mortgage. For example, HUD, the Housing and Urban Development through FHA, many times regulates and does not allow financing on properties that are directly border high-power tension lines. They do allow some exceptions, but in all cases, all cases, that anything that I've seen or anybody that I've talked to in over thirty years doing this, that the property is not worth less when it borders a high-power tension line. The reason that Eversource right now could come out and say that this does not affect property values is because it's not mapped anywhere. Underground power lines are not showing up on any bank appraisals. They're not showing up on any of those type of evaluations. But right now, as we speak this, I just received today a draft from the National Association of Appraisers to add underground power lines as part of the bank appraisals. And my feeling is, is that once these start showing up on appraisals, and you have a three hundred plus power line by your house, your property value is going to go down. The study says between eleven and twenty percent. It's not as bad as high-power tension lines because those are visible. But, you know, my question is twofold. First of all, if agencies like FHA and HUD and other lenders deem high-power tension lines as both a risk to the value of the property, okay? Why would you feel that an underground power line right directly in front of someone's house would not have the equal depreciation of value when that starts showing up on bank appraisals? And my feeling is, is this, this new, these new proposals that are coming in are running parallel with this project. This project, I'm thinking that the new proposals will be out, they're all in draft stages right now. They have not released any guideline changes yet. High-power tension lines are part of an appraisal. As soon as they went on appraisals, property values went down. And you can look online, there's no electric company that debates that. It's just a proven fact. If your house is here, there's a high tension power line here, you get thirty percent less availability of mortgage financing, and your property value is less by eleven to thirty percent. As soon as underground cable power lines are going to show up on a bank appraisal, there's absolutely no reason for the same effect to happen. I don't, I don't get involved in the medical debate of what magnetic fields do to different people. That's not my fight here tonight. And again, I think you can talk about both sides of that equation, but I'm talking about a fact. I'm talking about a fact that when this high-power tension line shows up on a bank appraisal in front of your house, your house is going to be worth less by ten to thirty percent than it is today. It's, it is no, I can show you any type of high-power lines and show that that's the effect on real estate. So I would like to get a comment from you about that. And also, you know, you sit there and you say, well, if it has no health effect, there's been rooms full of people here that don't want to be in their homes anymore because there's going to be this in front of their house. How, you know, so regardless of the medical effect of those lines on people, the overall value of your property is going to go down. Once this starts showing up on bank appraisals and it has to be disclosed to potential owners, it's going to not be as valuable. And it's in the draft stage right now, those changes.
Can we get a copy of that as well?
Sure. Again, it's, it's in a draft stage right now. And again, I will, I'm going to, I'm going to send it over to our state rep, Dave, and if he wants to distribute it from there, because I already promised him I would send it to him. And, but again, you know, I do think that, that, you know, honesty goes a long way, and the way you say a sentence, you know, maybe to get your point across is good for you guys. But to say things, but there's no debate that high-power tension line affects home values, yes or no?
So we're not proposing any high...
But you do, you do agree with that, right?
Well, I'm not asking that. What I did do is I asked our state department whether they had any information on the issue that you raised last time. The one thing that they did mention was that occasionally they'd get inquiries from lenders about whether a home was in a fall zone of overhead towers, which means that if there was a weather event with a tower falling to the...
That is already existing. That's an already existing guideline.
Right.
And also, train tracks are already existing, overhead power lines are already existing, easements, for example. If you guys need an easement on a property, that, those are already showing up. This is a brand-new thing to show underground power lines. Right now, it's only proposed for two hundred plus because those are ones that, you know, that, there's so many hundred-range ones already out there, I think, and again, I'm giving my opinion now. So far, I've talked only in fact that it looks like the new proposals are for two hundred-plus lines. But I'm just saying, when they show up on bank appraisals, that is going to affect the value of homes tremendously. And I'm just, I think that that's a real problem, again, that's not debatable. The debate over medical things can go on and on, and I'm concerned, I have a ten-year-old son, my house is twelve feet away from the power line. So I have that concern as well, but I'm more concerned that as soon as this power line goes in, that my house valuation is going to go down by twenty percent. And I'm concerned about that too.
And I do thank you. We did look into whether there was any existing rules for appraisals, and we found there was not. So if there's something in draft...
Not for underground, right? You're not, you're talking, because it is over, over, over.
So if there's something in draft that's being proposed, we'd be very interested to see that because we want to be able to assess it.
I want to ask you a direct question. You're, I'm talking, right now, overhead power lines are required to be on real estate appraisals, yes or no?
I don't know.
Okay. The answer is yes to that. So just be careful what you're saying, because right now you're saying there's no...
We're talking about underground.
Okay, but, and again, the way you just said it though, you just said it's not required.
It sounds like we need to get the...
I don't want to be for a fight. I'm just looking...
I understand. It sounds like...
There's a point that nobody's talking about.
I understand. It sounds like it would be good if you could get the reference to people, and we very much appreciate that information.
I just want to throw in there one small issue. It's not one of my houses. I just want to check the gentleman, yeah, you. I didn't catch your name earlier. You're a customer relations liaison between Eversource? And you said Winchester. Do you represent other, I did deal with other towns, but community relations represented for Eversource. And you said for Winchester. Do you do, you kind of...
I never see them times.
Okay. I was wondering if they had one, just one guy from Winchester. Didn't seem right. Project manager, the one fifteen KV line going in is running parallel to an existing line. And I had heard the expression that it was a redundant line, but they'll be actually running in parallel next to each other at the same time. They won't be energized, correct?
Correct. It's not redundant. It's a term I made use, is bifurcating the lines, combining the lines together, so they'll both be in use and essentially sharing the load.
All right, okay. I get that concept. I, and I heard that from you this evening. Previously, I had heard it explained that it was going to be a redundant line. Didn't make sense to put them right next to each other, it was going to be redundant. We have an earthquake or some kind of event, the damage is one, they're both gone. Wouldn't make sense. The vaults going in, the size of the vaults, you're running an eight-inch line through, pipe, steel pipe welded?
Steel pipe, yes.
Oil field?
Yes.
Three lines in it?
Three conductors, yes.
Is there, why can't they go into the existing vaults? There must be existing vaults if you've got that system already in the ground, don't they?
There are existing vaults for the existing line, and the reason why they can't go in the existing vaults is that the pipe needs to maintain a certain separation from the existing line, mainly due to mutual heat sharing. You don't want the lines so close together that one would overheat the others. So they have to be far enough apart, and that means that they can't share the same network.
How far apart? I mean, the diagram showed the new trench, didn't show the existing trench. How far apart are these, these lines?
It's going to vary based on construction condition or design basis. What we would like to see is a minimum of ten feet separation between the old existing line and the new line, but that will vary.
So it'd be one side of the street from one and the other side of the street to the other?
Or at the center of the street and the side of the street, it varies throughout the length of the line.
Okay, then, how would they, how will the town be able to deal with these powered lines? We got a broken water main or cracked sewer line that's leaking, and they've got to dig it up. How long will it take before they can respond and break ground with those hot lines in the street?
The same way that they would do it today.
Well, I mean, how, okay, how does that...
So the way that works, you're, I think you're referring to an emergency situation where they would, what I call an emergency dig save, let all the utilities know that they're digging in the streets, and we would send our coniour crews out to mark where the line is and let, for instance, the DQW know exactly where we are, so there wasn't a safety issue. You mentioned a hot line, the lot, the pipe itself, the eight-inch steel pipe, is not hot itself.
And I'm saying, but by hot, it's kind of...
Inside, correct.
So your question about, one question, we're asking Eversource about very closely is the location of air lines and our water and sewer lines.
Yeah, that's one of my big concerns. The town's got to get a crew to dig up the street.
Well, and long-term, Winchester is completely, you know, we've rolled out town, at least all the pipes and lines are in place. Are, much of our expenditure is replaceable. And one of the concerns we have as a town is, I mean, not to be penalized by having to dig under various types of high-power lines, and so we're looking at that very closely. We don't want to bear a lot of additional costs in the future when we go to replace and fix our water and sewer lines. We're kind of, thank you.
My first is just a comment to the town, and I think if you said correctly, you have two consultants, one on the health and one on the construction. My, I, this isn't even really a question, I just implore you, after hearing that gentleman speak about what's going to happen to our home values, whether it's a real threat or a perceived threat, I don't think anybody is thinking more than one level down about what's going to happen here. And I'd like us to get a consultant out about what's going to happen to our home values. And I'm not just talking about our home values. I'm talking about the effects of our home values go down, or let's just say fifteen families go ahead and put their house on the market at once, that is going to affect our home value, that is going to drive those things down. That is not only going to affect home value on these streets, it's going to affect home values across the entire neighborhood. Now, let's fast forward about what's going to be taxes, what's happening to the Morocco School District. Let's go ahead and fast forward a little bit further, where one family, knock on wood, this never happens, but one family suffers any kind of loss or any kind of disease, whether it's related to this or not, there will be a panic and there will be a sell-off of houses in our town. And I think it's important that we get a consultant to figure out what is going to happen if this is the case. And I don't have the answers, but I don't think anybody in this room does, and I think that's important. So I just implore that we, that we potentially consider one additional consultant. Now, I'd like to talk to Peter for a second. You, I think it's, I think it's a little unfair, some of the language that you guys are using, and I truly do think you guys are ashamed. I know, if you listen carefully, you're very particular to introduce him as a doctor, as an independent, and I think you're choosing who you want to represent in this case, whether he's right or wrong. I think it's very important to be careful with what language you're using, because the correct answer is, we don't know. We don't know the health. There are people on both sides, and I think there are different levels that people have to take. And for us to recognize this as the person who's going to go ahead and influence what someone's going to do with their life, or what, or maybe a child can speak a little bit further from a room, I think we have to be careful when it comes to public policy and public safety, how we're representing ourselves. So that's fine. But you keep bringing up the World Health Organization constantly. I've been here for two meetings. It's the World Health Organization, the World Health Organization, the World Health Organization, and you tell us that these things are known, and they've done studies for twenty years, and they've done everything. I'm going to, I just, you know, why not go to their website? Childhood leukemia is a comparatively rare disease, with a total annual number of new cases estimated to be forty-nine thousand worldwide in two thousand. Average magnetic field exposures above point-three microtesla in homes are rare. It is estimated that only between one percent and four percent of children live in such conditions. If the association between magnetic fields and childhood leukemia is casual, the number of cases worldwide that might be attributable to magnetic field exposures estimated ranges from one hundred to twenty-four hundred cases per year. Based on the values for the year two thousand, representing point-two to four-point-nine, four-point-nine-five percent of total incidence for that year. Thus, if health magnetic fields actually do increase the risk of the disease, when considered in a global context, the impact on public health of EMF exposure will be limited. So my first question is, for the three-hundred-forty-five line, are we potentially going to be exposed above that point-three microtesla, where it says only one percent to four percent of children in the entire world are exposed? And number two, after hearing that, if, 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 can you sit there and after talking about the World Health Organization, say that there's actual studies that show that this is not caused childhood leukemia?
Well, number one, I guess I, it's difficult to respond to things that are being read off a cell phone and so on, so forth. But yes, I mean, the World Health Organization has looked at it, they wrote a long and extensive report in two thousand and seven. And, you know, if you look at the whole report, the bottom line was that they said, yes, there are epidemiological associations, but they are not supported by biological evidence, by evidence in animal studies, by laboratory evidence and so forth. And their bottom-line conclusion was that they feel that there is not sufficient evidence to really establish standards, and doing standards at extremely low levels is not going to be supportive for public health. And so I think all I can say is, you know, look beyond the World Health Organization as well. Look at the American Cancer Society, you know, look at the National Academy of Sciences, you know, look at the Centers for Disease Control, look at the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences. I mean, they're the ones who actually fund it.
Can you, can you answer either of my questions? Are children going to be exposed to greater than point-three microtesla, which they say between only between one and four percent of the entire world's children get exposed? And number two, can you say conclusively that they would agree that this can potentially cause childhood leukemia?
Well, I would have to look at what verbiage they use. I mean, I'm just assuming that you read correctly, and that there are epidemiological studies that might suggest that there is such an association, but that that association is not necessarily causal. And I think they feel that evidence is quite strong that it is not causal.
Okay, so you're saying that there is a chance, number one. And number two, are kids going to be exposed to greater than the point-three microtesla?
Well, you mentioned that you lived at four ninety-eight. I looked at that quarter, I think this was in response to a question that came up at the, at the last time, and I think the field there is approximately one to two milligauss, which is something like a tenth or two-tenths of a microtesla. So it's below...
So you don't think there's a chance that we're going to be exposed to more than point-three anywhere on that line?
Well...
Could I ask Eversource that question?
I'm just giving you the results from that location.
Any location. I'm not just concerned with myself. I'm like, I'm like you people, I actually care about the rest of my community. Will it be exposed? Will our children be exposed to more than point-three?
Well, you have the results for directly over the line. Directly over the line is probably three, three microtesla.
Three microtesla?
Yes.
That's ten times greater than what the World Health Organization is saying in this, when they're talking about childhood leukemia, where only one, between one and four percent of all children?
The bar is...
Yeah.
Thank you. Can I just, just be to provide the citation to the board? of the document so that we can research this?
It's the W H O dot O R G.
Just provide it to the chairman of the board so we can research.
I guess the question was, could you set the text that you're citing as a reference?
Yeah, that's no problem, yes, I'll get there.
My question was, I was curious, what was going to drive from the proposed route to the alternate route? How would that change and happen and why are we not running it just underneath the train tracks? So the first question is, you showed two routes, one's the main route and one's the alternate route, I was curious what drives it to move from the main route to the alternate route? The second question is, I don't understand why we're not just going right beneath the train tracks versus going through the streets?
So in terms of what drove the line to be like a cold, cold winter, cold winter route, sorry. In terms of the preferred route to the notice alternative route, what made that decision? Again, it goes back to that scoring criteria, we looked at those 16 or so factors that I mentioned, everything from number of residences, number of sensor receptors, traffic impacts, environmental impacts, et cetera. It was not subjective, it was actually put into a matrix and scored and the preferred route scored better. It was deemed less impactful based on the criteria and that's how we got to the preferred route. In terms of why they would just put us under railroad tracks, it's really just a practical construction issue, it's very difficult to construct underneath railroad tracks and railroad track owners generally don't want to see people doing construction underneath their railroad tracks.
Yeah, and the reality is, I mean, that's farther away from houses, right, so it's less compatible to the community. So is it just costing or is it, or is it that you don't want to deal with rail?
It's an operational issue, I think it's fair to say the railroads don't want to deal with us, they don't want to, you know, interrupt their operations for construction projects. I mean, it happens, crossings, for instance, we will have to cross the M B T A railroad tracks near the Ledgermere Station. We're working with the M B T A and they have very specific guidelines and criteria of how we do that crossing and what we have to do, et cetera. It's a very involved process, but, you know, generally, just to make sure that the train system runs effectively, they have guidelines and they don't want to see more impact than necessary.
So to summarize from hearing this, even though we're cut by less impact than the community overall, short term, there's more head, so.
As David was mentioning, the M B T A has guidelines for how far away the line has to be from the tracks. So in some instances, depending on what else is in there right of way, there's not great, we had other significant obstacles, physical and engineering obstacles along the road. Does that make sense? So we can't, for example, we can't, we can't just bury the line underneath their live traps, there has to be a separation from the center of the tracks.
Yes, it sounds like there's more regulation to the tracks than our homes.
My name is Al Kanti, I've lived here since 2010. I live just off of Cross Street or the 345 line. And not that it matters, but I'm an electrical engineer too. I actually looked at the E M F analysis and is it true that you used 206 amps as an input for your analysis?
I would have to check the exact number, I mean, we used the max for the peak load, we used the maximum.
So it was the peak 2018 load, which was 206 amps. Would you mind telling everyone what the capacity of that eight mile, 345 kilovolt line is?
I don't actually know the answer, I just wanted to get back to it. We can search for by goal. I would assume it's probably an application, but we can't look into it.
Would it surprise you if it was like eight times higher than the 206 amps? Okay. Is it true that E M F is linear proportion, linearly proportional to current?
Yes, that's true, the general truth.
So even though, and this speaks to this slide as well, it's sort of misleading because you're providing a lot more capacity, but you're basing all of the E M F numbers that you're showing us on something that is far lower than what you could actually do. So let's say everyone agrees, this is great, we like these numbers, your analysis is hunky dory, in two or three years, when you push more power, the numbers are going to change. Is there anything that will be done contractually or otherwise to hold you to the numbers that you've shown for now and beyond?
So I'm an electrical engineer, I'm not one of the engineers who designed the project, we can get answers to these questions. I would say that, you know, we look at the peak loading, which, you know, by definition is one of the higher loading scenarios, you know, could the line physically possibly ever carry more? I don't know, it sounds like you're supposing that's true. We have the information.
One of the questions that we were asking, one of the questions of beginning of research, was the capacity to monitor. They asked the researcher, yeah, E M F field force, so that's one of the things we're looking to. There are some examples, I believe in my own country where that's been done, but they asked me that.
Well, this guy, Bill, she was in line before I was, go ahead.
My name is Deborah Costas and we're relatively new to town. We bought a new construction on Adams Road in September. My husband and I have four children. We knew nothing about this from the builder, from EverSource, the real estate agent, and we didn't find out about this until a few weeks ago when a new neighbor moved in next door, brand new, and she told us about this. If we had known what we know now, we would have never moved our family to Winchester. I am concerned with the E M Fs, very concerned. My husband is in the medical profession and the last meeting, I was very impressed with the townspeople of Winchester and their intelligence, their forethought, their questions. And with Dr. Peter Valberg, if you simply do a Google search on him, he will be an expert on many issues. And you can do that Google search yourself, it's been brought up here tonight and it's been brought up at the last meeting. He is a friend of Big Tobacco and how can we trust somebody who has been retained this time by EverSource to testify how E M Fs are not dangerous when he has testified in the past that cigarette smoking is not dangerous? So I think we need to look at that very closely. Thank you. The other thing is, okay, thank you, thank you.
I have never testified that cigarette smoke is not dangerous. In fact, cigarette smoke is an excellent example of a very dangerous substance.
Thank you for clarifying that, I certainly don't want to accuse you for anything, but I would just advise people to do their own research on Dr. Valberg.
Do you have a citation for what you're referring to?
I just Googled it and his name comes up and I just read about a few things and anybody can do that, it's, and he clarified that, I'm not accusing him of anything, I'm just asking people to do their research.
He was representing Philip Morris in November, not back in the seventies, it was November.
It's just something that I believe people should pay close attention to, that's all. This is the safety of ourselves and our children that we're all here for. Not, I'm not trying to personally attack, I'm just trying to look at the broad picture. So my husband is in the medical profession and the last meeting, it was brought up, after a couple of people brought up websites, the EPA and the other site that was just mentioned about the E M Fs and how it didn't, those numbers didn't match along with Dr. Valberg's. I believe you said that that's inconclusive, E M Fs are inconclusive. And I know that if we have a mole on our skin or a lesion on our tongue or a polyp in our colon and we go to the doctor and the doctor says, that's inconclusive, I know that medical professionals will side, will err on the side of caution. And why in the world would we take the chance in Winchester for a project like this when the data is inconclusive?
My name is Tom Porter, I'm in the butter on the Pond Street to our station. Can you hear me all right? Yes, we have to stand back. What I think we have is a, like a culture difference between, you know, whoever and the people of Winchester. People of Winchester are just like you would be if we were coming to your town. Being in the butter, I have small examples of what a large company does or doesn't do and I'd like to just share those, they're not E M F, it's not exactly health, it could be my health if I'm worried about things, but the power company comes and cuts my trees, even though they're not even over their land. They don't stop and say, Mr. Porter, we're going to trim all the branches off of your hemlocks, 27 hemlocks, we're going to take all the branches off one side and none of those branches actually are going to fall on our property, they're going to fall right down on your property. So I've got to go out there and say, what are you guys doing? Well, they could be causing a brownout, well, but there's no equipment anywhere near those branches, so that's, that's like bad attitude. I climb Horn Pond Mountain all the time with the dog. For two and a half years, and I granted it's not EverSource, it's whoever came before, whoever came before them. One of the towers, which brings power in from Canada, has had the cross braces on the ground, the towers are 100 feet tall. Every, every single tower from here to Canada has a cross brace on it. They're wooden towers up on top of the mountain in full view with the wind, coming up in a 45 degree angle, coming out like that, couldn't be more vulnerable. Do you think in four phone conversations, I could find anyone who even knows how to report such a thing? No. So I've reported it and then nothing ever happens, nobody cares. But this is, and my, you worry about my trees, yet what kind of brownout are we going to have if the tower goes over with all those lines on it? There are three towers, I think, over the mountain. So that gets, that gets to my question about what goes underground from Pond Street into Boston right now, is it similar? Because I don't have to look at everything from my point of view, I can look at it from your point of view. Has anybody had a study on it? On the stuff that goes into Boston, which I hear some of it's 20 feet underground? Has anyone done a study to find out if people are sick on the way? I mean, we live in Winchester. I drive by Woburn every single day, you've got the canal coming down there. I had a babysitter whose daughter was one of the sick people back in the day, nobody even knew why she was sick. Right on, I used to drive over there every time to go pick up the babysitter. But this is a type of issue that we have, it's kind of like, nobody's going to tell us the whole truth and we're not going to give. And what's going to happen is you're bigger than us and you're just going to win somehow, but you have to do things like maybe bury it deeper, maybe put it in the center of some street somewhere, maybe put it down the railroad tracks where there are no, you have to make a decision that makes everybody shut up. And this is not the kind of thing that you're able to do. There are, there are other issues that happen right in my neighborhood. I don't know if you're going to have transformers associated with this. Right now you have transformers that you can hear three streets away. And you think you'd put up sound attenuation, just a simple cement block wall, like you put down 128? No, nobody's interested in that, you could give a darn about 204 Pond Street, you could give a darn about my two neighbors that are closer or the ones that are further away. And lastly, the type of thing where there's just complete deafening silence is 15 years ago, they started storing telephone poles there. Are you kidding me? On a Woburn address, you're storing any, two trailer loads, anywhere from 40 to 50 telephone poles in the open air, in the open rain, directly next to Woburn's Horn Pond, which is a water source. Now, they don't take it directly out of the pond from I know, but they take it out of the groundwater. So I did hear that you're going all around the property and doing testing. Are you doing testing underneath where those things, I think were illegally stored because of what those telephone poles are made out of? And to give you an idea of the culture difference and then I'll shut up. One day, they were cutting my trees and I went over and I'm more like, what are you doing? And I said, and furthermore, those telephone poles, they smell like hell. Poor Donald Swenson's sitting there with the west wind coming in and he smells it all the time. For 15 years, there's a stench coming off the end of Pond Street and Woburn and Winchester line right there, those people live with a stench that no one from the power company could possibly care about because you live in some other town. You put the telephone poles in our town.
Maybe they should put them up when they're falling down.
Well, they put them up because people drive into them and that's another problem. They need a place to put them, but they don't need to put them next to a water source and they don't need to put them where somebody can smell it from 100 yards with a west wind every single day, 300 days a year with a predominant wind coming across and without permission. They did not have permission to put those there. Now this is the type of thing that causes a culture where, I mean, I'm as reasonable as any person you're ever going to meet. I know we have to have electricity, this is the way it is, but you have to find a way to make it so that it works out and to make it so that these underlying things, these small issues, the punch lists, gets taken care of so that people like us don't come out and disbelieve everywhere that you're saying. Thank you.
You referred to the I S L S agency, are they actually a state agency or are they, so in your speech you just talked about this agency, what are they?
They're not a state agency, they're actually a, like a, you are a nonprofit corporation.
They're a corporation, they're slides are corporation, you said agency?
They are a corporation that manages and regulates.
So they're, they're a corporation, right.
They operate under a tariff.
Does EverSource have any former employees working for you? You don't know the answer? Does, will Siemens work on this contract at all? Will you purchase anything from Siemens about, to shut my app first?
Sir, just a little touch of the button.
Does any, any items from Siemens about for this contract, for the 345 kilowatt? Would they be a contractor?
I find out, we don't know.
Does Siemens have anyone on the board?
I'm not on the 345 project.
Do they, so does Siemens have anyone on the I S L?
Do not have.
When you did your, when you did your estimate for this project, did you include all the taxes that have to be paid for the right of way to the town? Did you include that in the, in the cost of this project?
Yes.
You sure?
We included a rough estimate for the municipal property tax, property acquisitions, et cetera.
That was included in the proposal? Cause I didn't see it, but maybe you improved.
It's included.
Did you include anything that the cost is going to cost business owners, loss of business that you're going to pay business owners? You did say you're going to pay business owners for the loss of their business at the last meeting.
I didn't say that.
Well, the other, the other representative said it would true in case by case, was that included though in the contract?
I think you're referring to the other project.
Has EverSource had bids that would come in? Would EverSource cap cost on this, would they guarantee their bid on this project?
Sorry, guarantee?
Guaranteed your bid, would you stick to, would you put a cap cost on your bid? For the, for the complete project? Would you go over or would you guarantee that you won't go over your budget?
I think I don't guarantee it'll ever over budget.
You wouldn't do that, your competitor guaranteed, they would cap cost. EverSource won't do?
I can, we have no word of the contract, but if you say it's a project manager, I mean, every guarantee it'll never over budget.
Okay. Doctor, are there any dangers? Doctor, are there any dangers to the infrastructure by this line, 345 kilowatt line that you can see?
Uh, thank you. I'm not sure what you mean by infrastructure. The, uh, electric and magnetic fields would not affect other utilities under.
Could they now cause induced voltages?
The, these lines that go under the street are not going to be affecting local voltages at all.
Local induced voltages on lines that are running parallel to them?
That's correct.
You could not, you would not create an induced voltage on these... Just by the EMF running parallel to other lines? That's not something that would happen just by...
If there were a short stretch of water pipe, there might be a small voltage, but it would not, it would not be very large because of the house.
If you have a small voltage, you gotta, you gotta suit a line parallel in it. Wouldn't that increase the voltage? The longer the parallel, the higher the voltage would be induced?
Well, the voltage induced would not necessarily reduce any current though because it would depend upon the conductivity of the sewer line and the conductivity of the lines.
Right, and that, how about gas leaks, I mean, anything, or any of the cable? Something that's insulated would not be grounding itself. It could be an induction into that, right? And then, could this cause corrosion? Could they induce voltages, cause corrosion on the infrastructure? There is a possibility.
You might have to ask the line engineer. I have not seen corrosion on these lines.
Could you get a spark here and there where the voltage is left if they were induced?
No, they're, they're insulated insulation and shielding as well.
What's that?
The, the conductors are enclosed.
Not, not enclosed, in the induction voltage that's created in the actual parallel sewer lines, water lines, gas lines. If they have voltage in it, and then they are, if they were insulated, and then if they left, you know, the insulation, could they create a spark? It's possible.
If you have a, a high magnetic field, they would have a high enough voltage. See, the, the, for these kinds of magnetic fields, the voltage that's induced depends on the size of the magnetic field.
This is large magnetic field.
Underground lines, fields are so low that I don't see them.
Absolutely. And how far are we gonna be away from the sewer lines? Do you know? I, I can't answer that.
Sir, again, the design basis I would prefer to see is that our line is ten feet away from anything. Like, I may not have it in our instance, you know, there will be other considerations, but the design basis is to keep everything ten feet away. I think with that kinda distance and with the low fields we're talking about, you know, in theory, you're discussing is not refractory reality.
I think it, it may, but how about the operating temperature of the lines? What's the temperature they're gonna be operating in the 345?
Again, we're here to talk about the 115 project, so I can't answer that.
What's a 115 operating temperature?
I can look it up, I can actuate, I'm not the design engineer.
When you cited the project...
But again, let me be clear, that the 115 line is in an age, is surrounded by...
Can you, can I get the information of the 345 line? Because that would be actually at higher temperature. Could you...
You can speak to the project manager.
I asked last time, I basically would give it to him if I came back this time. I asked her at the last meeting.
This meeting is for a different project, I'm sorry.
This meeting is actually...
It's for both, it's for both. You expressed at the last meeting that when you cited the project, you didn't go out and look at how close the houses are to that project. Is that a little bit irresponsible? That you had no idea, and you said you just looked at the map and looked at the street? You did not measure how far the line would be from a home?
We have an idea generally.
No, you don't. You, you, how do you have an idea?
Well, just by...
So you never went out and drove the street and actually put a measure?
I did drive the street for sure, and I also walked the street.
At the last meeting, you said you never looked at it?
No, what I said is that the school ring does not take into account explicitly
The homeowner is here, so you're...
The distance of the residence from the edge of the street.
Don't you think that's imperative, though? Because some of these homes on border street are less than, it could be fifteen feet. And is it a little bit irresponsible not to note that in this part?
No, I, I don't think it's irresponsible to tell people that the impacts from, that way of construction.
The impacts from construction to residences, or the noise, or gas, or traffic?
No, we're not talking about the noise or gas. We're talking about the impact on the lines. That's what people are concerned about.
So we believe that the levels of magnetic fields inside residences, in accordance with the graph that you see here, are very low.
I understand, but even in citing it, you have, you think you brought a measure in each public dwelling? You know, how far along do all these remain from that line, just to make sure, you know? But you think this would be just our...
Let me interrupt, like, we are mapping the distance, and we will provide the information when we are asking EverSource.
Okay.
So I think you're...
How do I access the temperature?
I think you're, you're sort of running your mind a little bit. Is there a last question or a last, uh, response?
No, sir, please, gonna give me the temperature.
My name is Janet. Um, I have a question regarding this 115 K line for the project manager. Um, have you ever evaluated the noise from your construction? And how big it is, and will that affect our Lynch Elementary School?
Yes, noise was evaluated as part of the project petition criteria. Uh, so the noise is only during construction. And the noise that you would experience while you construct this is similar to any type of street construction. We're talking about excavators, we're talking about generators. Uh, this is the same equipment you see at construction sites every day as you drive around. And in terms of how, if, you know, proximity to other, uh, uses such as schools, uh, you know, we have not seen anything that's going to, uh, you know, be in excess of normal construction practice at, you know, at any of these construction sites.
So, um, you're talking about daytime construction or nighttime?
I'm talking about the construction in general, whether it's day or nighttime.
So if you're doing daytime, there's a chance our students going to study in earthquake, right? So if you're doing nighttime, you're going to affect residents' rest, right? So because, um, do you know which part of the room I'm talking about that is close to Lynch? Have you done your homework? I did my homework. It's the west side room. Do you know how far it is from Lynch campus?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble understanding. We're talking where?
Lynch Elementary School.
Yes, the school, I agree, yes.
Do you know how far away is your construction from the campus?
I would have to look at a map and measure, I would guess.
Do you know how...
Go down a pause, go down a pause brief, and then we'll accept.
Yeah, I did my homework. So it's the west side room. And do you know how far it is from the campus? It's, let me tell you, in case you don't know, it's three hundred feet, around three hundred feet. So, um, I don't know, how can you guarantee the noise won't affect the students?
I, I can tell you that from other construction projects that I've worked on. You know, one of the...
But can you provide us some detail and numbers?
If and when we authorize that construction, we wouldn't negotiate with EverSource and restrict our orders and plans. And I believe that, uh, your colleague was here last year. The question was asked about an art school and then back there. And I think the answer was, they would try to schedule the construction around areas like the schools during the summer when the students were not there. So there's a, the short answer is, it certainly would be the town's interest to make sure they schedule the construction to minimize the impact. If, if it goes ahead, we'll certainly...
But there's a chance they delay their project and won't be able to finish during summertime.
In that case, in that case, they have to delay.
In that case, then our students, kids is going to study in earthquake, right?
Yes, that's possible.
Yes, sir.
You keep telling us that it's safe. And I'm guessing that the people at Porter Branch in Southern California were told by the utility companies that the pipeline there is safe. And yet, it's been spewing natural gas out for a few months, and they say it's worse than the Deepwater Horizon. That was safe. They told the people of Flint, Michigan, that the water was safe to drink. Uh, just the other day, I read that another public utility had accidentally leaked radioactive substances into the water tank. But it was safe before that. Um, Instar put the situation, uh, putting a 454, a 354 kilovolt unit into Stoughton. Is that correct, you guys took over Instar? Is that right?
We are.
Uh, I spoke with a number of people. I called Selakman in Stoughton, Public Works, the DWP, and a number of citizens down there. And I was told some things that were very disturbing. They said that Instar, even though that happened five years ago, you've yet to fulfill the promises that you made. Um, I was told that the fire department was told, "If these transfer boxes catch fire, let them burn." That's not very safe here. We have gas running here in the street, too. Uh, I was told that you made a lot of plantings, and those plantings were never taken care of, and they died. I spoke with a contractor who worked on that project, and he said it was a boondoggle. He said the equipment that was supplied was subgrade and had to be replaced. It took much longer than it should have. I was told there's a lot of lawsuits. Would you care to comment on some of those lawsuits that are filed against your company that you haven't settled yet?
I'm not familiar with anything that you, our first, if you wanted to give specifics, we'll gladly address them. I was not employed at Instar at the time of this Stoughton project. And so I don't know what you're referring to, but just had some specifics, I would gladly address them.
Yes, sir.
My name is Susan Borchardt, and I'm at 35 Baldwin Street, which, uh, that's up to a cross-street property. Uh, I was noticed by EverSource at the meeting, but, um, did not receive any subs or notices. So forgive me if these answers were, um, these questions were answered prior to it. But one of my concerns is, and I, besides all of the others that have been brought up, um, that I haven't heard addressed other than just now is the thermal conditions and the heat. And I do want specific answers as far as, um, how hot these lines run at under normal operating conditions, and also in emergency operating conditions. And, um, then, um, I understand they're cooled down by, and I think it's, uh, the oil, dialectic oil, uh, which I, which, um, is hazardous and that if it spills, is a hazardous waste spill. So, um, I'd like to know EverSource's history with regard to hazardous waste spills of the dialectic oil. And, um, also, um, and some of it's been touched upon. We say that there should be, or you would hope for, ten feet from our water, our pipes, sewer pipes, um, gas and other utilities. Um, I, I, the question arose to me as you spoke is to, why ten feet? What is the danger that that ten-foot, um, width should be adhered to? And, uh, because my question was originally, how far from this heat and hazardous material, and perhaps the EMF danger should these pipes be? Um, and then, um, something that was brought up with Mr. Porter, um, as far as the trees and public shade trees, do tree roots affect your, um, transmission line? And, um, how far away does that have to be? Are we going to be losing, um, public shade trees if these lines have to be, um, far enough away from, um, there? And the other thing is, is, um, what Mr. Porter too alluded to is maintenance and regular upkeep. Um, how are we assured that that happens? And if there is a break in the line, or the, um, spill, or leak, or anything else happening, are we the residents that are affected in our homes and our water? Are we, are you required to notify us of these issues? Or do you just go in and it's a break fix situation? Thank you.
There are a lot of questions here. Let me try to get them.
Man, I'm sorry.
As far as the, the temperature, I will get back on the specific temperature and get that to the board. Uh, but, and again, it's just because I'm not a design engineer, I don't know that number. But I will say that the line itself, in addition to being, you know, buried below ground, uh, and the electric components encased in insulating fluid and in steel pipe, it's also, the pipe itself will be encased, uh, in either thermal concrete or thermal fluidized backfill, which also provides, uh, a heat insulation uh, in the, as far as finding any, any specific heat.
It doesn't isolate, it doesn't heat insulation. It's supposed to disperse the heat. That's what that thermal filler is. It gets the heat away from the diesel.
Yes, correct.
That's not insulation. It's actually the opposite of insulation.
It, it dissipates the heat, yes. So I will get specifics on the actual number of heat. In terms of the, how does the waste question? The, uh, dilutive fluid is a mineral oil product. Uh, we call it mineral oil dilutive fluid or motive. Uh, according to the, uh, uh, product specification sheet, it's actually considered, uh, you know, less of a hazard than petroleum products. Uh, it is not considered hazardous waste. Uh, however, it is a, you know, an oil product. So if there is a spill, I believe it is, uh, over fifty gallons or more than, I'll have a certain number of gallons over seven or eight days, then we do have to report it to MASTEP. Uh, and so that is the agency that would notify if there is a spill.
I think she has something about trees too, I think her question was. Did she have something about trees?
I, I, yeah, I asked if, um, there was a moving interference and that trees had to be cut back or taken down for that purpose. And also, uh, what is EverSource's, um, history with regard to, uh, the spills of oil spills?
So on the tree issue, we are not planning on removing or cutting any trees with this project. Uh, in terms of the construction, uh, when we excavate the street and get below rate, if we do see, uh, large root structures that are in the ground, if we cannot avoid or move around them, then we would hire an arborist that would consult on, you know, what we can do. If they have a way to, uh, sever a tree, the root, to protect it, that we can construct, uh, through that. Uh, in terms of the oil spill history on this line, uh, let me actually get back on the history. I do not think that there has been, uh, any reportable spills in the last twenty years on this line.
Not on this line. I'm talking about, uh, your overall, uh, corporate history. Are your precedent preceding companies? Uh, because the line that I'm going to be most concerned about um, is the 345 coming down Cross Street, which has nothing existing at this point in time. I'm talking, I, I wanted to know what your history is with your business.
So we do have other lines, and yes, over the course of the years, we're having spills in those lines, uh, not frequently, but they have occurred. In regards to the 345 line, I should point out that that technology is a solid electricity reason to oil on that line.
All right, so I just want to start off by thanking you, because, um, you have listened to the citizens in the last couple of months, and I want to specifically thank you for intervening in, in the energy facilities. I had a couple of questions that came up as a result of a letter that EverSource sent to the board just for the last couple of days, even just yesterday. And they have to do with mitigation, for the most part. And there was some, um, well, one thing I wanted to ask was the difference between the pressurized, the oil-filled line and what it's not. But I live in, near the 345 line, and it's not, as you said, an oil line. I know there are reasons why you propose to do it, to what you have. And I'm also not the project manager for that, but I'm asking whether, if that were proposed as a pressurized line, would that affect the EMF levels?
Well, as you saw from the, uh, the pressurized line, partly because they have to surround it with fluid and put it in a pipe. The conductors aren't closer together. So yes, the magnetic field is generally reduced to have, in that particular technology because of the steel pipe and because of the closer, uh, positioning of the conductor.
So I guess then the follow-up question is, why didn't you propose the pressurized oil-filled line for 345K?
So again, I can't really speak specifically to that project, but I will say just to my general knowledge, that project has different building requirements, different capacity needs. And in general, XLPK can't handle a higher capacity, a higher need than the HKFK can. Uh, basically, that project has a higher need, which I believe in this one case.
Can that, could that be put in a fight plan? We do the, uh, we don't have a specific, we really need to speak to that.
Well, one thing that was said the last meeting is that there is already a 345K line that runs from Woburn down to Cambridge. And that, that one, I believe, is in the same oil-filled pressurized technology. So when you say, you said something about the differences in the road, and perhaps, I don't know if that means 345K or if it means something else. But I took it to mean, and you can correct me, I took it to mean that you can do... correct me, I took that to mean that you can do a 345 line K through the same pressurized technology.
I can confirm to you that we have both 115 and 345K HPF lines. The voltage is not the issue, it's the amount of current that can be carried by the line, the capacity of the line. That's irregardless of voltage.
So, so sort of, you're not sure that this particular line could be proposed, a 345K line, could be proposed as a, I'm sorry, you're not sure what the 345K line could be, that the technology could be used for, that pressurized technology could be used for?
I don't know the specifics.
I would be curious to know if it's possible, why, you know, if it's possible and if it's not, you know, explain explanation and what effect that would have on the predicted EMF levels, if that's something you can provide to the board, it's a problem, and they can pass them to us. There's another technology that you mentioned in this letter called cancellation loops. And you mentioned that they reduce the magnetic fields above the trench, but increase the fields away from the trench. I was a little confused by that. But I was wondering whether that was the same technology that was recently mandated by the facility site in a power line that's national grid, actually not national grid, but I know you're working with national grid on this project. National, national grid has to do with in sale. And the board's decision, they referred it as uncompensated passive loops. Is that the same thing as cancellation loops?
I would like to answer that question. Do you want to ask, is there any question? What here do you have?
Yes, I looked at that report, I did not work on that particular line and they did use a cancellation loop. They did that in that particular case because the fields were much higher than what we're dealing with here. They had fields, if I recall correctly, that were about 145 or 150 milligaus directly over the line and they wanted to reduce that. And the cancellation loops did help reduce that somewhat and they reduced it, I think, to about 70. That 70 is still considerably higher than any of the fields that we're talking about here.
So, is it, it's actually in place now? That those cancellation loops?
I think that line is in place, I don't know if it's been tested.
It is under construction right now.
Okay.
I think the model, I guess that's what I should say, is the modeling that they did for that line predicted that a passive loop would reduce it from 145 to about 70. And EFSP was happy with the 70.
Right, and so what I'm reading from your letter to the board selectmen is that that technology would only increase the levels directly above the trench, but not out where the houses are.
That's correct, that's right.
It just seems, it does seem a little odd to me that the board, the site board, would recommend this mitigation, where now, we see in this letter that you're saying, well, it doesn't actually help the people who live alongside the line, lots of people might be driving above the line.
That's exactly what the report says, I think you can look up the report. It does not change the.
Which report are you referring to?
The same, the same one, the key link contract.
The board's decision, the facility site board's decision, is that you're referring to?
Well, yes, it's in the site board decision, but it's in the sort of backup materials as well.
Alright, I haven't seen the backup materials. And then one more thing, from that same letter, you mentioned putting steel shielding above the line and that that would do the same thing, but essentially, forgive my ignorance here, would sort of magnify the field off to the edges instead of, and shield it from, you know, from the low. How do you put them on the sides? Is that a legitimate mitigation technique?
You can shield it in different configurations. I mean, you could add shielding to the sides as well and that probably would do some reduction in the lateral direction. I'm not sure how effective those are because the trouble with the shielding is it doesn't completely surround the source, like a pipe completely surrounds the source. A shielding to be effective has to completely surround it. And if you're dealing with a typical installation such as the 345K V line, putting steel plates around all four sides would make it inaccessible to maintenance and I think that could be wrong.
You know, I mentioned, not four sides, two sides, because that's the size where we all live. And I guess lastly, and I mentioned this last meeting, I'll just mention it again, we've mentioned before that there are other 345K total lines in this area, some of which may be pressurized and which may not be. And if you refer again, people are skeptical. It would be nice to be able to confirm what your model predicts would be the EMF against what actually exists. So if there's a way that EverSource can measure these strengths in existing lines, apply the modeling applied to these lines here and just do a comparison, I think that might be helpful to all of us. Thanks.
So this is the last call, we're going to take the questions from the three people that are standing and then our last call, that's it. So if you're not standing now, we'll shut up. Okay, yes, go ahead.
At the last information session, they asked about the criteria, the major criteria, you said you didn't have that at your disposal. So I was wondering, you said you came to get that and providing that, I was wondering if you had the chance to bring that information with you today? Because I've been checking our website and that information is still not easily available. And I tried to call through the mountains of files on the EFSP website and I just haven't been able to find that. Were you able to bring that with you this evening?
The list of criteria that we used were on the slide in the presentation?
No, I, I'm, alright, I wanted the scoring, the ratings, the scoring, the figure that makes one more appropriate.
I don't have it with me today. And it was, it's hard to, it's in the great form to investigate it in so detailed, but we did recently receive, or we buy a set of FAQs and that was included there, so I think that soon we will, we will have that.
Yes, I think any type of scoring sheet, scoring weight seems to be useful, I sympathize with the problem. When you go to the facility site and where, it's a morass of legal and other files, so if you could find it, send it to us, we'll then post it and then available.
If I could just, I would encourage you, there are hard copies in the library or at the clerks. If, when we give you the table, it's very detailed, there's numbers. If you look at the routing analysis, there's a discussion of what the criteria are, how we apply it, a quality discussion of balancing the rules. So I guess if you're interested, I would encourage you to look at it in the context of the analysis.
Could you actually give us the pages or something? We thought you were very well, waiting for some other materials.
Okay, okay. And then I just have a question, that was sort of my follow-up from last time. But I'd like to know sort of what happens if these lines do overheat and there is a catastrophic event underground such as a fire? Is that a potential? What does happen if there's a fire and, particularly, I'm interested in the 345 kilowatt line since it's running directly in front of my home, but I'm sure the residents that are having 115 will like to know that. And who kind of feels that? Is there a special training that our fire department needs? Do we have the equipment to handle that type of situation? What puts the protocol?
Again, adjusting the 345 line, I'm not an expert on that project, but in general, I would speak to our electrical system and when there are catast, overloads as you say or catastrophic issues at these stations, there are mechanisms, breakers, et cetera, that basically will trip out or shut off the line and turn off the electricity on the line almost instantaneously and deenergize the line. And that's happening, that happens automatically.
But what about if there is a fire in the vehicle that is right on the front of my house or any of these other residents' homes? Their gas line?
We're going to ask Chief Nash to, I'm pretty sure he had protocols for him, if that one we could ask him to put it out. We'll put that out there.
This is the follow-up question to my earlier question, and your comment about cancer rate is going down. I want to correct you because the reason you said is age. So are those epidemiology studies aged and gender adjusted? Okay, so if you understand that specific term to answer your question. So cancer rate is going up. I don't want people sitting here and with a take-home message saying the cancer rate is going down. Okay, that's a wrong message to take home because I'm a primary care doctor, I won't be responsible to everybody here. And number two, I have impression that you are not really ready to answer a lot of technical questions. I'm not a tech person, but people who did a little bit of research, Google online, or they did their, you know, lab work and doing some research, ask questions, you are not prepared to answer those questions. And all I hear and to at least more than 10, a dozen questions, you're not sure about the answer, you're going to go back to look. So this is a major product, this is a pro, it's program or whatever project for you and yes, probably it's money-saving for you, but it's damage our community has, okay, in the long term. So we really would call the select events to reconsider this and not let this line run through our Winchester. That's all I want to say here. Thanks.
I would, you have a small floor, so to have you so hard to ask, true folks, but thank you.
Thank you. So I'm very curious about why, you know, I heard EverSource is supposed to notify residents within 300 feet along the road. Is that true?
As part of our notification about the EFSP process, we did notify about 303.
Okay, thank you.
Did you get a notification?
I don't think I'm living within 300 feet, but.
So let me, just like we said earlier, we gave equal the address, we gave EverSource the addresses for everybody within 300 feet and we mailed town notices to those folks. If you didn't get that, you should check on our town website to see if the factory address is there and if it isn't, we can add it. The other problem is that when we look at the property records, it may be that the mail is going to the landlord or to the building owner and not necessarily with their renters in the building, they may not be getting it. So again, if you go to the website and look to see, and there's also the notify button, so we, it's entirely possible that we sent something to the building and it didn't get to the residents.
Exactly, yeah, thank you so much for the offerings and the explanation. But exactly, that is a big issue because, again, I, my property, I don't think it's within the 300 feet. But I'm helping the neighborhood because in a very occasion chance, I knew this project. So it's very, again, it's a very occasion chance. So I start looking around, informations and ask neighborhoods who live along the road. I did a lot of door-to-door outreach. I believe, you know, on your slides, you say your company will do a lot of door-to-door outreach. I believe I did more than you because I covered a lot of streets on, along the road and I actually did a survey on the person I reached so far. About, at least, 90% of the people, they did not know this project until we, the group, reached out to them. So that, I want to plead, plead to the selectmen and the state representative, state senator that I think this is a big issue because still, to, to the, as today, even I believe those streets I didn't cover yet, or we do cover yet, still have a lot of people don't fully know this project. I heard on the agenda, you will have a hearings in March. So I think, you know, I think we should formally notify people. No, the information should not come from us as residents around, along the road. It should be, we notice. And also, I think, because a lot of people didn't know that or don't know that, we should postpone the hearings because March is just on the corner. So again, back to my question, my first question is, why, I'm so curious why the rules that the residents within 300 feet should be notified? I, according to my research, they, they are concerned about the EMF will affect people who live within 300 feet. And this notification for the people who live 300 feet, is that a coincidence or there is something hiding behind this fact? Thank you.
Just to respond to that, the distance that was chosen to notify butters is prescribed by the EFSP.
EverSource asks that we provide them with the names and addresses of everybody who was a butter or a butter to a butter and we draw that as 300 feet on either side. We mailed out notices to the meeting and for these information meetings, we did the same things, we mailed out to everybody there. It was, that has no relationship to the EMF field density distance, okay? This is a legal standard for most public procedures and most, you know, utility projects, butters and butters and butters, 300 feet are notified. If you're not being notified, go to the town website, put your email in there and you will be notified, okay? The other thing we're doing is we're beefing up our town website to put out our information to get it out to Facebook and to get it out to Twitter, so if there are folks that want it, that are not close to it, that are further away from 300 feet, please sign up for that and we will put a lot of information out to people and get as many people contacted as possible.
Yeah, thank you. So as I said, because I, we have a limitation, you know, we have venue limitation, we could not do the job EverSource should do. And, you know, I seriously request, you know, to leave the town officials and the state officials consider that and ask the second board who postponed the hearings. Thank you.
I believe, we will, we will look into that, but the hearings are not ours, they're the state's, so we will look into that issue, but we don't have direct control over the state board, those their hearings, so we will look into it. Yes, may I, your turn?
My question was actually the same as that one was earlier about the matrix that you guys keep to about factoring in and weighing all the different factors and scoring everything and telling us that's how you base your decision on the final site. So we have asked about a number of times from you, we all are going to the library, we are all looking, we would like you to provide that for us. So is your final answer just that you're going to give it, where are we going to be able to see that?
To any college, but today, we actually met with staff from the town, they asked for that. We will provide the matrix and the accompanying text that goes with it pulled out from petition directly to the board's.
Okay, great, thank you. And then my next question again, well, first of all, I'd like to reiterate what was said earlier, thank you guys for stepping in, we appreciate the process has been formalized and we've formally intervened. That's huge for all of us who, much like most of the people here, on the direct of butters, we've described many times, and directly in the corner of the 345 line and now we're about the project until that a month ago. You know, we opened our mail, I'm sure, I'm not saying that we weren't informed, but I just don't look at it informed at all. It's a little worse sign than I'm hearing from neighbors. Anyway, my question to you guys is just realistically in plain language, like, it's my understanding that this is kind of it for people to voice their concerns, this is the last time we're all in front of you and the heat on EverSource, like, we feel very powerless, to echo what Mr. Porter was saying earlier. It sounds like this decision is beginning, you know, in a couple of weeks in March to be in front of our boucher, the site board, Representative Day and Senator Lou, that we appreciate all of you guys being here, Mr. Howard, like, could somebody just give us an honest assessment of what can we do at this point? Like, we're obviously very concerned, I think it's genuine that dozens of families are seriously considering selling their houses or what they're going to take as next steps. People who have just moved here, expressed regret moving to our town, like, forgetting everything else, the why. forgetting everything else, the whys, those are real serious considerations for all of you, who are Winchester citizens. So could one of you just give us a real answer in terms of what do we do from here? What's really going to happen from here? This really, David and Goliath, like, we're trying to defend our families in a physical, short, extreme.
So, I mean, the answer to your question is, what happens from here on is what we decide to do. And what happens from here on, EverSource and the siting board have their preferred schedule. We can influence that, okay? And we will, through the state oversight, through our own board and others, we will lay our expert, and push very hard. We're looking at three options, as I said before. We're looking at getting them to reconsider the IASO plan, the general strategy. We're looking at alternative routes out of Winchester. And we're looking at alternative routes within Winchester, that will have a less, uh, bad atmosphere. We're pushing all three of them. We've made no decision to endorse any one or none of them, okay? We will keep pushing all those, and if we find good reasons to say we should stop it, or we should defer it, or we should somehow mitigate it, we'll do that. I don't think we're ready to do that tonight. I think what we wanted tonight in these sessions was to hear from EverSource, and hear from the committee, what the issues are. I think we've heard pretty clearly that there's a broad range of issues out there. I'd like to basically, you know, what we're going to do is take a week or so to digest everything we've heard, sit down with consultants, and we'll bring them on board, and sort through, and see if we have answers to the questions, and if they propose to make better decisions, then tell EverSource we want alternative routes, or to charter a method, or postpone hearings, or go before the state board. The reason we filed as an intervenor on both routes was to make sure that we decided as a community what we want to do, that we have a legal standing to do that, and we will push that very hard. How that works out, I can't tell you tonight, but I will tell you that we are looking at that, and we'll consider it, and then we'll continue to figure out the answers.
Of course. Was there a reason that came, what was the impetus for it to be introduced to Winchester in the first place? I'm just curious. What, why, what was the impetus to bring it into residential Winchester in the first place? Do we know that, subject to statements?
I believe the answer to her concealing was that the IASO legal said the network is failing in certain places when overloaded. And it said we need to meet the following standards, and follow the capacity requirements that is in this. And they put out a bid to the transmission line operators, like EverSource. And they said, propose solutions to this. EverSource and others proposed solutions, and if I understand it correctly, the IASO legal evaluated it, and said we'd like this, and as EverSource's proposal, they duplicate the 150 volt 345, that's how they arrived here, by our best effort. Okay, you have the honor of the last question?
I also want to thank the board of selectmen and our representatives for all the work that you've done. We all really appreciate that you're listening to us, and that you're coming up with the best solutions that you can. I do have one other concern that I don't think has been mentioned about the 115 line. My name's Caroline Woodward, I live on Woodside Road. And I live, my property actually, above the culvert, that is currently the only connection between Little Winter Pond and Big Winter Pond. It's a very narrow passage. In the 85 years that my family has lived in this property, that passage has gotten smaller and smaller. It once used to be a conduit for wildlife and water, to get from one body of water to the other. It's been shrinking and shrinking. I went out with my tape measure today, and the depth of the actual road is 30 inches. So if you are burying a vault that's five feet deep, it seems to me that that is going to extend two and a half feet into the culvert, further blocking the passage. So can you speak to that? How are you going to manage that extremely narrow passage? Will it impact this, the passage of wildlife and water? Will it also impact the crowding in there? There's already sewer lines, there's other air lines, it's a very narrow space, and I don't see how that's going to work. Can you explain that to me?
Yes, I can. So in terms of the vaults, we looked at features like this culvert, and we are not placing a vault anywhere near the culvert. So the only thing that's going to run through the culvert, or near the culvert, is the eight-inch pipe itself. In terms of where it'll go, it would be basically the same plane as the existing eight-inch line, as well as the other utilities that are in that culvert, the gas line, dealers of water lines, et cetera. Certain utilities, they run underneath the road, but above the bottom depth of the culvert. So they're basically tucked into that void between the road surface and the bottom of the culvert. Yes, they're, they're, they're inside that void.
So they're, they're in the, the 30-inch asphalt space, or they're in the open space between the culvert?
They're in the open space.
So they will, they will further block the passage of wildlife and water between the two ponds? Is that what?
No, because they will be below the asphalt, but above the bottom of the culvert. So it will not be increasing, or it will not be further extending the depth of the culvert. We will not have an effect of the distance between the culvert and the water surface.
I'm confused. So when you're saying the top of the culvert, you mean the top of the open space?
You have the road here, and you have the culvert.
The open space, in the culvert, yes.
The open space, that goes this deep. The existing pipe is here, the new pipe is here. But it will not go below the bottom of the culvert. So it will have an increase in the size of the culvert, reduction between the culvert and the open space.
Right, but it would be another pipe going through that open space?
It would be another pipe going underneath the road surface, inside the culvert.
Okay. And I know that we have an advisor, who the town is hiring, to look at the scientific implications of these things as far as EMF goes, but during that, in that span, where you have the line that is not in the vault, and it's in this very narrow thing, which is now going to be, it's just the pipe in the culvert, do the EMF, do the measurements increase? Because it doesn't have the shielding, and it doesn't have the vault, and it's just sort of in the open air at that point?
To be clear, the vaults are only every, so 2,000 feet or so between on the line. They're only sporadic throughout the project.
Oh, I didn't understand that.
We have the entire 7.7 miles of the project currently, I think we have 19 miles to it.
Okay, so the EMF data that you've been presenting is for the lines that are not in the vault? For the, okay, all right, thank you for those answers. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll go to the town.
Who makes the final decision on this?
The final decision on this project rests with the state's Energy Facility Siting Board. Not with, not with the town, not with EverSource, however. They are responsible for, and required to listen to the towns and the community's impact. And the reason we are filing as an intervenor for both lines is to ensure that we will be heard and agree on standing before them to file. So we will, we will work very hard to influence that decision. So. I'm sorry. The environment, and the state board, it's, however, they will listen. Okay, so.
But there are reasons why we just did not do this, to have, oh, that one.
I'm sorry?
The reason, do we have a reason as to why we cannot do this, to have that one?
In a lot of part, because when we asked the community what their concerns were, in the summer or the fall, we found nothing. And now that we're in it, and we decided it was time to take a decision to do that, so we have that so. People are on vacation, so I don't know what are the, we are clearly working on that issue now, so thank you. Well, thank you very much.